Welcome to the 534th meeting of the council, which is a meeting to hear the annual plans and the submissions that the citizens have made from throughout the region. We really welcome the citizens' input and I truly thank them for all the work and thinking they've done alongside us to make their submissions and to be prepared to come and front up particularly in an artificial environment like we're under with the lingering COVID pandemic issues. So I'd really like to thank them for all the time they've put in, we really appreciate it. And after all, more minds, the better on the hard issues we have to deliberate about. So thank you to everybody that's put forward a submission. So I'll welcome councillor Craig Pauling to start with Ameghi Fokato. Thank you Craig.
A taitimutai parika wae amaha nuu iki te poupou o te raki hauiha. Apupu mai kahaua tāfiri maate fakapuria ti awahuka o te fenua pakahi waitaha e ati hei muriora. Aitete tūtahi ka mehi aroha ki na tini aitoua, ki na hoaya, ki na tōo na pakanga o te ao, e takatoi na fenua, ki wiwi, ki wawa, ki te wa, ki amau mahara tonu, tātou, ki arātou. E na mate, oi afānau, oi amarai, oi atakiwa, haire, haire, ha'ri atūra. Hari kīhauai ki nuu iha waiki roa, hauai ki paamaua mao. Aitena mate, moi mai, moi mai, moki okimai. āpati hono, tātai hono, rātou, ki arātou, tōhanga mati. āpati hono, tātai hono, tātou, ki arātou, tōhanga ora, anooraera te nākou. Atena koutou i rongi tāho tango te wa. Noumai haramai ki te nei hui o te kōnihera tāio ki waitaha, ki te hui o tō tātou mahe re atetau. Ka tautoko ahau te mehi a chia hui ki a koutou. E na memo te hapori, ko taimai nei, ki a kōrero teia i ki a mātou i tō koutou wero, i tō koutou moimoiā. E na memo te hapori, a tena koutou. Ki na ka imahi, ki na kaikōnihera o te kōnihera tāio ki waitaha, a tena koutou, tena koutou anooraera, erōranga tera ma, a tena koutou ka tō. Kahoatū te rāku ki a tumutai au Kramewa mo te karakia o tātou nei hui. Tenaku.
A tena koutou ka tō nei ano te mehi a koutou. Itaitoko ka mehi ko mehi a councillor Pauling rāwako chia hui i te nei, i te nei ata ki a koutou te hapori nei i tōno tōno ki a mātou i te nei wa mo te mahe re a tāu, anooraera tena koutou, tena koutou, a tena tataka tōa. Aitaka kine te karakia i te nei ata, tokana te raki e tu. Tokana te raki e tu, vaka tikka tikka tatuora nuu iopai ꞌu 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 ꞌu, ꞌu ꞌu tāfinto. Tokane tāne kotoka māua ka raki heki teia raki hāpa e ka e tu ꞌu ꞌu te raki e tu nei me te papa takon tō nei. Tūmaumāi te raie tu nei, ya tamai waho ya tamau ka tahi. Te pūtaki tamai te tārā, vaka maki nuu i te pūtaki tamai te raki tu. Ha ha, heki e uki te raki e tu nei. Fiti fiti nuku, fiti fiti raki, fiti fiti papa, fiti fiti tāu. Tuu te mahorōnui, tuu te mahorōro, tuu te mahorōnui e tu nei. Tāfia keereho, ki a tamai waho. Tuu tōru fiti fakamaua, ki a tūina. Tūina haumie hui ꞌu tāki e. Muriora, kiura Jenny.
Thank you councillor Pauling and to Mataya Kramewa. We'll start the meeting. I don't believe there is any, well, we'll get on with the meeting, I should have said. I don't believe there's any apologies. There's no conflicts of interest that anybody's advised me of and we will turn to the hearing of submissions for the annual plan, which you'll find on page, the resolution on page two of the run sheet and page five of the agenda. So we have a, are there, are there any issues of clarification we need to do at the moment? Did anybody have any extra things? No, right, moving on. Thank you to staff for putting this together. Catherine, would you like to speak to this report, this resolution that we're going to do at the moment?
Yes, thank you very much, Tenakou. The formal consultation for the draft annual plan opened on the 2nd of March and concluded on the 3rd of April. There were 2,806 submissions were received and approximately 160 submitters have indicated that they would like to present their submission to the council. We're having these hearings over four days. There are four late submissions that were received after the consultation closed on the 3rd of April and the council is required to resolve to accept those later submissions if they would like to include them. And so this resolution is to receive the report and to accept the late submissions to the draft annual plan.
Has anybody got any questions for Catherine? Doesn't appear to be any questions for you, so thank you very much Catherine.
So you Jenny, I'm just gonna ask Catherine, if I may, just in relation to the late, two of the late submissions, I couldn't find the Christchurch City Council one or the one from Genevieve Robertson. Were they in their papers already or are they coming? Or did I dismiss them?
I'm not, those two are not waiting to be heard, my understanding, so therefore they won't be in the set of papers you've received now, but they will be available on your, on the website. Are they not there yet?
We can check that out.
They are there, so we can check them for you. Sorry, I'm just, we've got a team event happening in the room here. So we will, we will make sure that you can find them before the end of this, so you can look at those.
Thank you Catherine.
Thank you very much. All right, well I'll move from the chair that we, that the council meeting receives the reports, so that's the whole report, and that we accept the late submissions to the draft annual plan. That's the Woody and Sefton Community Board, the Wain Makarere District Council, Christchurch City Council and Genevieve Robinson. I'd like to ask Peter Scott to second that, is that all right?
I'll second that.
Seconded. Thank you, seconded by councillor Peter Scott. If you don't put your hand up and object by using the electronic hand, I'll take it as everybody's agreed. Right, there's nobody objecting, so that's carried. Oh, thank you very much everybody, the motion is carried. We're moving on now, we're up to page four of the run sheet and page eight of the agenda. Now, we're going, we're going to start with the first person who's making a submission. Are they up online at the moment? Can people hear us at the moment?
Yes.
They can, okay, good. So I would like to invite Mari Gray from the Summit Road Society to come to the table. And Mari, you have in total 10 minutes, but it would be good if you spoke for up to five and then we can have some time to ask you some questions. It's up to you really, looking forward to hearing from you. And thanks very much for your quite detailed submission. Over to you Mari.
Kia koutou, a taitimutai aroha ki a koutou ka tō. So I'm Mari from the Summit Road Society and today I'll be speaking on behalf of the Summit Road Society first and then I understand I've got my personal submission straight afterwards?
Yes.
Yeah. So I think most of you know the Summit Road Society, a grassroots conservation charity which is really focused on preserving and protecting the port hills. We own and manage four reserves on the port hills and we lead the backyard and community trapping project, Predator Free Port Hills. So we really support ECAN's focus on climate response in this plan, both in terms of reducing the emissions and taking action to build resilience. We are in a climate and ecological crisis right now and it needs urgent action and that action needs to be properly resourced. The time for plans has gone, the time for action is now. We, we're really pleased to see ECAN partnering with the Christchurch Foundation on the New Green Philanthropy Fund. We think that kind of innovative thinking is needed to address kind of the scale of what is required. And we saw a particular focus in the annual plan on landscape scale projects and we support that focus because it is landscape scale change that is needed. In particular, we've supported the focus on collaborative catchment based programs, a program to focus on urban waterway quality, including reducing sedimentation and runoff from the port hills, the revitalisation of the Canterbury biodiversity strategy, the development and implementation of a regional biodiversity monitoring framework, acting early with regards to invasive weeds and pests, an issue close to our hearts, a community engagement approach so that people are actually aware of the threat that weeds and pests pose and the catchment based regeneration through metu du with Arco. Including that focus on the community, we are a community led organisation and community engagement is absolutely key to getting things to actually work on the ground. We support the increase in the number of Enviro Schools. We've seen that ourselves firsthand through working with Enviro Schools and the Fakawata Healthy Harbour Project and the society has organised Arbor Day with kids since 1948. So we know the value of working with children to protect and restore our natural environment. We really acknowledge ECAN for their leadership of Peace Free Banks Peninsula and that funding commitment really enabled the expansion of Peace Free Banks Peninsula in order to get the support from Predator Free 2050. And now we actually have, you're rolling out right now Landscape Scale, Predator Control on the Wildside and Kātāriti and many more plans for the rest of the peninsula. The society is leading Predator Free Port Hills, which is a community and backyard trapping initiative. We have 1,200 households already signed up and we're, we're signing up more every week. There's so much enthusiasm. This is something people can do themselves in their own backyard to make a difference to the biodiversity of the port hills, of Banks Peninsula and of Christchurch City. We really support the community funding pathways. For example, the, the new community contestable fund, Waitaha Action Fund. It's a fantastic initiative, but it needs to be strengthened. You would have seen that there were 46 applications totaling over $800,000, but only $315,000 was allocated. So there, there is a huge mismatch between the amount available and the demand from the community. And it makes perfect sense to resource the community to undertake some of this restoration work because it's kind of harnesses the energy and enthusiasm of volunteers and they can make huge changes with actually comparative very, very little financial input. Thanks. A huge thank you to ECAN for their support of our Voka Valley project. We were successful in getting some jobs for nature funding, $650,000 from the government. And ECAN was one of the, the few organisations that could provide co-funding at the scale of what we needed because for nature, you're always required to put co-funding into that. And we were really, we were really delighted with the support that ECAN provided there. And they're saying that this is part of landscape scale restoration and, and I think that, that ability to move quickly when these opportunities come up is a real asset and I think it needs to be allowed for within the, the funding framework. Because often these jobs for nature applications, you know, there would be a three week turnaround to get the application in, so you need to move very, very quickly. And we are hugely thankful to ECAN for the support provided, but to acknowledge that there's just so much more to do. And the submission gave the example of our spurvalerian program. So it's a six year program, we're midway through it. So we're wanting to control spurvalerian within Ohinitahia Reserve to protect the kind of the flora that live on the rocky outcrops, the Banks Peninsula, forget me not, Prostrakorfi and the endemic Banks Peninsula hebe. Ohinitahia is one of the few sites in Littleton Harbour with the Banks Peninsula, forget me not. So we're putting a real big focus on, on containing this invasive weed. It's hugely expensive, we have to get textile contractors in to do the work. And it makes perfect sense to do it now rather than wait to the future. And also if we contain it in Ohinitahia, we protect the rest of the peninsula because that's how these fine wind, airborne seeds spread with the prevailing winds, they'll spread onto the peninsula. But it is just a massive job every year to keep finding the funding. It's just like I'm going on this funding treadmill around and around and around trying to find the sort of $5,000 each round of control to get it done. And, and maybe it's not a lot of money in the scheme of things, but it is a lot of money for the society and, and we just need more funding pathways and so do so many organisations. Funding pathways to actually do the work early rather than let it get out of control. Also talk about the issue of feral pigs and deer, I've talked about this for the last few years. So we have, we have sort of nearly completed a huge program of work at Omahe Reserve to control feral pigs and deer, erected deer fencing around the perimeter of the reserve that is now complete. We're now installing equi mesh to deter feral pigs, been working with the Christchurch City Council on a cowl to get those numbers right down. And we are already seeing the bush come back. It's just like, it was actually quite disheartening. Omahe Bush, it's an old remnant bush, amazing biodiversity, just full of ferns. But if you got off the tracks and you went into the middle of the bush where the people were not, you could just see all the damage that were being caused by deer and pigs. Now that those numbers are very, very low, we're starting to see the bush regenerate. So it is, it is exciting for Omahe Bush to see what progress we've made. But I think what about all the other areas of bush left on the port hills and Banks Peninsula? It is something that needs to be addressed and it is a climate response. Forest and bird have estimated that controlling feral browsing piece across the whole country to the lowest possible levels would increase carbon sequestration of our native ecosystems by 8.4 million tonnes. That is nearly 15% of our greenhouse gas emissions in, in 2018. That is a massive difference in that, that feral browse control to the ability of our carbon sinks to store carbon. So to sum up, we really support ECAN's focus on climate response and on supporting landscape scale projects. There is a great deal of work to do. We really support the focus on the proposed introduction of the climate levy. We think that that will help ring fence the money and get the action needed to ramp up action on climate change. So thank you very much for the opportunity to talk for this draft plan.
Thank you Mari. I think we've got time for one question. Is there anybody with a question? Yes councillor Lan Far.
Kia ora Mari, thanks for your submission. I am interested in just hearing a little bit more about your call for council to be increasing the Waitaha Action to Impact Fund and, you know, noting that we could put endless amounts into this fund and it would probably still be oversubscribed because there is so much great work going on in the community. But do you want to just give us a ballpark about what, what an ideal figure would look like for you? Would it be doubling? Would it just be that little bit more that you talk about, you know, in terms of say 100K or something? I'm just trying to sort of get a figure because often when we are encouraged to increase things, we sort of scramble around about sort of landing where that might be. So I'm wondering if you had any thoughts on that?
Yeah, thanks Lan. I think the doubling it would be a really good start. I think that what Waitaha Action Fund has is a point of difference, is it supports big and large projects and it has the ability to form multi-year funding. And multi-year funding is very difficult to find. Often you're just kind of like six months at a time. So I think that if you could double that, you would actually see more of this landscape scale change because it would give that certainty for those projects to sort of actually make that step.
Awesome, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I think that's the 10 minutes. The bell must be about to ring, I think. So is there any other quick question or we might just choose to move on to your individual one? Thank you very much for making a one on part of the port hills. And I do recall that it's really good that you're consolidating what you told us last time, in my view. I remember clearly what you said in your previous submission. So, and thank you very much for sharing it from the grassroots experience in your organisation. It's really important for us to hear that. So thank you. So we might move on now Mari, to your personal submission, if that's all right with you. And so you can choose for how long you speak to, but there's only a total of 10 minutes. So over to you, thank you.
Yes, thanks Jenny. And thank you all for the opportunity. So this is, this is for me personally and my whanau. The, and of course I have a much wider focus than just the port hills. First of all, on the bus fares, I really support option one, the trial fare for a trial. I think transport is the low hanging fruit to take action on climate emissions. And if we can get the kids to catch the bus to school, that will make a significant difference. My own kids catch the bus for this very reason. And if they bus 80% of the school year, that's 3,000 kilometres of driving, sort of taken out of the equation. So you can imagine if every kid or the majority of kids were walking, biking or busing to school, that is an enormous difference. But the thing is, is that is a great start, there just needs to be so much more. I catch the bus myself. I often find it quite inconvenient. It's, it's not at the right time, it's, the buses are late, you've got to catch multiple buses to get where you want to go. And I persist because I am determined. But, you know, I'm an environmentally minded person. The average person, why would they persist when actually they've got a perfectly good car sitting at home, you know? So the, the bus system needs to be set up in a way that it is, it is accessible, it is affordable and is convenient for people to start doing that. And it is, it is honestly the simplest way that we could reduce emissions in Christchurch City. The second issue was the issue of the flood recovery work from the storm. And that I found this a complex issue because when you borrow and you spread it over 10 years, you essentially do put that burden on to, to, to the future, which works if the event is more than, you know, less frequent than every 10 years. But if it's all frequent than that, then essentially we're kind of putting a, a double loading on ourselves in the future. And also the issue of whether it should be general or targeted or a mixture of both. And I think I can get to the conclusion that actually I think that the scale of, of the event was such that, you know, I do support it coming from general rates, being paid from that. But that I am worried about what that will mean in future years for Christchurch City, which needs so much work. And I did a big sort of, I did a bit of a back of the envelope calculation for me. And I estimate it will kind of, my contribution over 10 years will be to say $40, $4 a year. And you think, oh yeah, that's not very much. But $40 could actually, if every person in Christchurch paid that money, that could make a significant difference to the environmental situation in Christchurch, especially the Christchurch urban waterways. But it is about that balance. I spent a long time reading through these documents and reading through the revenue and finance policy and all these things, but actually find some of the thinking behind this and in terms of why this was recommended. It was very difficult to find. And so while I support in this particular case, the borrowing over 10 years and spreading it over the general rates, because I think that's the simplest and most practical approach in the short term. I'd actually like to see a lot more kind of like scenario planning of the different situation and going out as a separate consultation with the community to get their thoughts on this because this is actually going to keep coming up and up and up. And it's a, it's a complex issue and I think people need to understand their complexity. Lastly, really support the proposed targeted climate change levy as a method to ring fences money and make it clear to the public how it's allocated. And for ECAN to take a leadership role in educating the community, such as its time but way, like way more. And some of the things I would like to see funded for that is the landscape scale restoration, forest wetlands, other rare ecosystems, both urban and rural, further work on the public transport, including extending free fares, pest and predator control, education and engagement with the public and building resilience to climate change. I also support investment in the urban waterways. And I think it's, it is a crying shame that there is really very few places close to Christchurch where you can go swim in a freshwater environment. Investment in Peace Free Banks Peninsula, I'm very passionate about this. Supporting Enviro Schools, partnership with Manofina Wanto Manautuai and investment in weed control. And of course, I also support community funding avenues. Now about rates, I know, appreciate this is a significant increase, but there's a significant increase because not enough has been done in previous years. And I'm not particularly well off, but I still support the increase in rates. And I actually want to see it go further because I can see the scale of what's needed. I can see the urgency of what's needed. And if we don't do it now, then it will fall on our children and it will be much more difficult and much more expensive for them to do it. So there's, there's no easy answers here. But if we don't, if we kick the can down the road, the situation will not get better. So that is why I am prepared to pay more, more in lights to say genuine and progressive action. But thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you Mari. Very well presented submission. Thank you very much. Councillor Phil Clearwater has a question.
Inakua Mari, and thank you very much for both your submissions. In your, in your earlier presentation, you referred to joining the Christchurch Foundation. And I just wondered, and just referring to your support too for the targeted climate change levy. I just wondered if in the future, we were to think big around protection of the port hills, if in fact you would see the potential for that targeted change, once the funds say had accumulated for, for example, for ECAN and other councils with the, with the foundation, to be able to use some of that money to include when it was available, like a purchase of a section or any sections of the port hills to improve biodiversity and, and increase native plantings?
Yes, I, I think that there is huge potential on the port hills because it's, there are a few other things that can be done with most of that landscape, you know, like it's got some pastoral grazing, but really that's just for weed control and diminish fire risk and for recreation. And I think there's huge potential with the port hills to improve the biodiversity. And the advantage of that, it is, it is on people's doorstep. It is on Christchurch City's doorstep. It is the gateway to recreation for Christchurch residents. And people fund things when they care about them. So when they can actually see action, when they look out their window and see the kind of the, the spreading restoration on the hills, that's actually something that they can see and say, yes, that's important. Whereas a lot of the action on the peninsula is absolutely vital, but people don't see it as much because it's kind of over there. And it's, so the port hills has that advantage. But unfortunately on the port hills, it is also going to be very expensive because there's not a lot of seed source. So you do need to plant most of that. So it's probably going to have to be tackled in stages.
Thank you. Kia ora Mari.
Well, I think that might be, the 10 minutes is up now Mari, but that's very something for us to think about. And the discussion around the port hills, as I know you're very well aware, has been going on for many years, and purchasing up the land and indeed re-establishing the bush up there, which would be fantastic. So I don't mind saying that I totally support it. Don't think that's predetermining anything really. All right. Well, thank you very much. And it's really good of you to give your time to us this morning and well thought out. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Bye. Bye. All right. So we've got a little bit of a change here. Amelia hasn't come online. So we'll be moving on to Peter. So welcome Peter, are you there? So, we'll be moving on to Peter. So, welcome, Peter. Are you there?
Welcome.
Oh, hi, Peter.
Hi.
Thank you. I'm just going to say that you've got 10 minutes, but you can speak for five if you like. And we'll have questions. So, 10 minutes is the total amount of time. So, thank you for coming in this morning and preparing your submission. Over to you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for reading my submission. So, I'll start with my oral submission now. Fear free travel. Free him from the care of the fear. Free him from the plea for a free beer. See him dance with glee through the day on his way with delight. Bus lane. The green for go is nowhere on the road. Green, we need to find our way home. Green for go, no waiting in the road. Greenhouse gases and the carbon thing. We play a game of chess with our gas. In our playhouse, we stress. We need to pay for our mess from our address before we get distressed. Yes, we stress in our mess. Safety. We, we get angry with no safety. Be they hungry or angry. We get angry with no safety. It is costly with no safety. No bus. We wait in the rain in vain. We wait in the night. We wait in the day in vain. For our free bus in the rain. The go bus is no bus. Or is it the slow bus? That is the finish of my oral submission.
Thank you very much, Peter. That's a very, not only is it, backs up your written submission. It's a, a very smart way to talk to us and it really got our attention. So, thank you very much. I see councillor Lan Farn would like to ask you a question. Over to you, Lan.
Yeah, thanks so much for that, Peter. It communicated a lot in a very succinct way. Thank you. My question was around your written submission in terms of support for, oh, and your verbal one, for the free fares option. And you also say in the, you know, you're expressing that you're really wanting us to reduce transport emissions. Some submitters that we've, that we've got submissions from have urged us to not only go for option one in terms of free fares for that limited group, but also option two in terms of flat fares for everyone else. Do you think in terms of, like, do you think that would be too much cost for everyone? And do you think we should just stick with option one so that, that limit, that group gets those discounts and reduces admission that way? Or do you want us to do more? Because I think a lot of people have been limited to option one or two. But it's going to be interesting to see whether they actually would like to see us both and maybe didn't consider that as an option. Do you have any thoughts on that?
My, my biggest concern is, no matter which option you choose, either one or two or a combination, is that it's going to break, the system will break down because so many people want to use it. And the buses will become overloaded, there won't be enough drivers. And, and that way, that way, that, that way we'll give up and go back to the car. So, I would suggest you choose option one and for the two years, get that better done. And then, then if it really, if, if, you know, if the providers can provide all the buses and the people get their, get their mind around, you know, get going off using the buses, then go for option one and two, and then go for probably an option of totally free buses.
Thanks for that. Oh, sorry, Jenny, you're on mute.
Thank you. I was too. Thank you very much. And I've got a question. I'm interested that you said that we're playing a game of chess with our gas. What's in your view is going to turn us around and make us see that this is absolutely urgent and take more action? What's your view?
Honestly don't know. I suppose when the water steps lapping at your front door, they will start to realise they actually really have to do something because they can really see it. Unfortunately, as a community, we're not very good at dealing with our problems until they become a real problem, you know, like that was in the nights. Yeah, I, I wish I knew.
Yeah, I think that it's a conversation we all need to be having, isn't it? And, and, and you know, for institutions like us and elected members, we need, we need all of our society really to, to step up. So, it's, it's an interesting conversation to, to have, I think. And I think a lot of people are having it, but what the answer is, is difficult. Has anybody else got any questions they would like to ask Peter? Maybe not. Okay, so we haven't got anybody else putting their hands up. So, is there anything else you'd like to say to us to finish off? Because we haven't used up your 10 minutes yet.
I suppose to reiterate, you know, we need to do something. And, and whatever we do, we've got to follow through to make sure it works well. You can't afford to have free lollies in the shop. And then when people turn up to the shop to, to get their free lolly, it isn't there. The buses have to turn up. The buses have to be safe for people to get on. The buses have to turn up on time and reliable. Otherwise, they'll give up, we'll give up and we'll go back to car. And we'll lose them for an awful long time to get them back on the road. You know, I've tried to solve this problem of, of climate change and things like that that we face in our community at the moment. Thank, thank you for listening to that.
Well, that's good. And I, and I think what, you can see what we've done in our submission document is we really are trying to generate that discussion around the buses. And I think that has actually worked out. We've had a lot of people making submissions. So, it's hard to get that message out and have this discussion. But I think we've actually been quite successful with actually generating that. So, that's good. So, thank you for taking your time and for writing your pieces and coming in. We really appreciate it. And, and, and make sure you come again.
Oh, thank you.
Bye for now.
Yeah. And I thank the staff too for their help in my putting this together.
Thank you. The staff are great. Thank you very much. Okay, bye.
Bye.
Okay, so have we got Kim Fowler online? Are you there, Kim?
Kia ora, yes.
Oh, hi, Kim. Welcome. Now, what we're doing this morning is, I guess you already know this, but I'll just say it again, is we've got 10 minutes in total. And so you can talk for five or six or seven or whatever you like, but we want to ask you some questions. So, we just need to keep that in mind. So, thank you very much for making your submission and it's over to you now.
Awesome. Thank you, Jenny. So cool to see you all again. I hope you're all well. I wanted to keep it pretty quick today and just comment briefly on the public transport fair proposal. So, obviously I really strongly support the targeted free fares proposal. And it's cool that this proposal targets both price sensitive and equity groups. And hopefully it's going to lead to an outcome that's great for both our environment and our community. I also like, something that surprised me, I think about you coming out with this in your annual plan and making an opportunity for engagement, is the number of young people who like got in contact with me just as an individual, because I posted about it, mentioning that it was really, really exciting to them. They hadn't like ever submitted on something Ecan had proposed before. But they wanted to know the exact details for how they could get their voices heard. And as somebody who's spent a long time trying to encourage young people and empower them to be engaged in local government, I think this was really exciting to see because it shows that when you propose things that are helpful to us, we will come and engage. And I know a lot of my friends wouldn't feel comfortable to make an oral submission, so I just wanted to highlight that. And then I also wanted to say that I think this is a really, really great step in the right direction. But we are living in a climate emergency and we do need to be, obviously addressing a lot of these issues as quickly as possible. And so obviously I do support other initiatives in this area as well. It seems like a little bit of a chicken and the egg scenario sometimes with conversations about buses in Christchurch. Because some people will say, oh, change the route and frequency. And some people will say, well, it's too expensive. And truthfully, changes in all of these areas will help, but we have to start somewhere. And I think that this targeted free fares proposal is a great place to start. So, yeah, that's all from me today.
Right. Well, thank you very much for putting you in your submission and indeed for giving us that feedback about the young people contacting you. Because it's really good to hear that feedback. And I've heard a lot of feedback about how simple we've presented it as well and how easy we've made it for people. So, it's really good that you're, congratulations on being a bit of an advocate there for, and working in that space and being an advocate for other young people, because we always need catalysts like that. So, has anybody got a question they would like to ask Kim? Councillor Lan Farn.
Kia ora, Kim. Thanks for that. I really just asked the same question that I asked Peter, if you heard that one. And it was basically, oh, sorry, I'm just getting some feedback. I'll just.
Oh, hang on a sec.
Oh, thank you. Thanks, guys. Yeah, it was just around, because the option one is a proposal and option two is a proposal. And we've had some submissions saying both in order to do more. Do you have any thoughts about if both were an option, whether you'd be into that? Or like Peter said, he thought a staged approach, we start with one and then maybe move to the flat fares after the trial might be good. Do you have any thoughts around that?
Yeah, I think it's an interesting question. I mean, obviously we should be doing the most we possibly can to address this issue. So, if the modelling, I presume you've done modelling on both scenarios, shows that you could do both of them sustainably at the same time, then if Ecan has the capability to, to do that, absolutely. I think that when you speak to people about buses, it's often older people who are more like, who are more excited about something like option two, like a flat fare that makes sense to them. So, that could be a great way to engage across the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. We've got a question from councillor Craig Pauling now. Over to you, Craig.
Yeah, Kia ora, Kim. Thanks so much for your submission. Hey, I just wanted to ask you a little bit more about your ideas for the climate levy. You mentioned a few things in there, but did you want to highlight any of them in particular?
To be completely honest, I was unfamiliar with the climate levy until I came to submit on the bus proposal. But I think that that's a great example of how when one part of what you're doing is relevant to people, then you can also hear what they think about other parts. Obviously, across, I can't, so I can't remember the exact details, but obviously across Canterbury, we're pretty challenged in terms of how we preserve and look after our landscape. Because obviously the deforestation rate across the Canterbury Plains is massive. And somebody who's close to me studies ecology out at Lincoln and hearing what he has to say, and he does like landscape management and works with farmers, hearing what he has to say about, you know, what needs to be done, but also the support that's available to people to do what needs to be done. I guess I pretty emphatically think that we should provide funding in those areas as much as possible. Because I, and I can't remember the exact details, but I do strongly think that we need to make the, you know, the, the best solutions that are supported by evidence and will be good for our landscape, accessible to the people who have the land or can do them. And so, yeah, definitely support it.
Yeah, Kia ora. Great. Yeah, supporting landowners and farmers. Thank you.
Yeah, anybody else with a question for Kim? Oh, well, there doesn't seem to be anybody else wanting to ask you a question, Kim. I think that it's really good to put in your submission and writing and then come on like this because it does enable you to do that extra bit of advocacy and you've done that really well. So, thanks very much. And towards the end of this month, we'll be making our decisions around these options. And as you know, there is some government work going on on climate, reducing emissions too. So, there may be some overlaps in the whole area. So, we could be, we're moving into a period where we're going to get some more swift action around that. So, that's a good outcome. And I, my view is that that has happened because lots of people like you bother and come in and submit on these issues. So, thank you very much and enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you very much. I hope the rest of the day goes well for everyone and your several days of hearings. Good luck.
Thanks, Kim. Bye. Have we got Daryl Hall online? Are you there, Daryl? Oh, hi, Daryl. Good morning. Welcome very much to our hearings. I guess you might have been listening in there for a bit. I'll just go over what the situation is so you're really clear. We have 10 minutes for each submitter. So, that means you can, we've, we've read your submission. So, you can speak for five minutes or up to 10 minutes. But it would be good if you spoke a little bit shorter, then we'll have time for any questions. So, over to you, Daryl. You, you start now. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Kia ora, Kouta. I'm submitting on the bus fare structure. My submission is focused on inclusion by asking you to consider an accurate definition of tertiary student. An accurate definition will include more people who are studying lower levels of learning. So, will include more people who are permanently cash poor and more rural people. A feature of workplace based learning, which will include trainees and apprentices, is that it works well for occupations in the primary industries, where students are distributed across the country and not only concentrated into urban institutions. Additionally, there are private training establishments that focus on rural delivery, such as in the equine industry. Starting with an inclusive principle allows you to better consider the needs of more of your constituents as your policy team prepares advice on implementing a policy that targets tertiary students. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. I, I was interested to read your submission. And I noted, you know, the emphasis on trainees and apprentice. So, it is, it is really good that you've raised that issue for us. So, there's a councillor, Vicky Southworth, has a question. Councillor, go ahead.
Thank you very much for raising this. And I'm, I'm not sure that there was an intention to not include this group, but I really welcome the fact that you're raising the risk that through the mechanism of working out who should get free, that they, they could get missed out. So, I know when we looked at the figures that the private training establishments were included in the estimates for the numbers of students. But what I'm interested in, can you, can you tell me, are all of these types of, these, these groups, apprentices and trainees, are they all linked to some sort of organisation that would be able to verify? And, you know, I think there'll be some sort of card mechanism to, to show, yes, this person is eligible. Are they all associated with some establishment, training establishment? Or is, or would some of these people be just literally going directly to, say, a private employee, employer, who would be then needing to go through a mechanism to establish, yep, this is a trainee, they're with me? But you know, is that, how, how would, how does, how would it work? How could you see that working?
Yes, there are quite a few practical issues with implementation for trainees. And I'm not even sure that there are large groups that will want to access the structures. But I guess it's important to start with the principle of inclusion and then work out the problematic elements as the policy is implemented and get advice on that. So, for example, you'll have quite a large number of trainees that are in the care industry, in the aged care industry, that do their learning on, in the workplace and are. uh that do their learning on the, in the workplace and are accredited in the workplace. That's not the rural example, of course, although there are some rural delivery, of course. Now, how that's done, uh it could be through, in that case, it could be done through perhaps a union. It might be the industry association that um verifies because the data exists to verify. It's just a matter of how you do it.
All right, thank you, Daryl. Our councillor Ed, you've got a question?
Yeah, thanks, Daryl, for raising this issue. It's something that sort of hadn't come across um before. Um my query um really is to do with um the businesses that sign up trainees and apprentices. Do they, is is there an understanding that perhaps or something in in train that they could contribute to transportation costs for their trainees and apprentices? Has that's, has that issue been raised with those organisations?
No, and I think it very unlikely that they'd be interested in doing that. The training agreements are attached to the employment agreements. So you start to get into um a whole different issue if you start uh amending the employment agreement uh through such a mechanism. Uh and that is an enormous practical uh difficulty that um I imagine your policy team would um enjoy um exploring.
Is that, you talked about unions before, just follow up there. An employer, if it was an employment employment across the board um requirement uh that that had to be, uh you know, there's a contribution made. Is that something that's that's possible through the union process?
Again, I think it's unlikely because it's so far away from their core concerns. Uh that's the issue. So I mention unions because they're uh the aged care industry is reasonably well unionised. But of course, most industries aren't highly unionised outside of the the public and ancillary public um delivery areas. Uh so you'd have to work through the employers and then you could start to get into issues of um some employers be willing, obviously, to engage, but a large number, particularly smaller ones, won't have the 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 time or the the um the mental space to focus on this issue, I would have thought. So the the simplest mechanism possible, again, I come back and and put the um the monkey on the policy teams' back to figure out the easiest, most pragmatic and uh way to implement the policy that that you come to.
Thanks, Daryl. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks, Daryl. Uh councillor Phil Clearwater has a question. Phil.
You're a Daryl. Um thanks for your your submission, Daryl, on focusing on the tertiary discounts. I just wondered if in addition you had a preference for one of the fare options?
No, I'm not going to comment on any of those because of the the role they occupy in my um daytime job. I'm merely focused on the definition of tertiary students.
That's fine. Well, thank you very much, Daryl, for what you've presented.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daryl. Our councillor Ian Mackenzie has a question.
Uh thanks, Daryl. Um if if we can't sort out some of the complexity of defining, you know, all these um uh tangential tertiary students, are we better off to scrap the tertiary discount? Or have had what might be your considered opinion a faulty system? Uh a non, not non completely inclusive one, if you get, you know, to understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I understand the point. Um of course, these are not tangential tertiary students. For example, all the people in the aged care industry are required to achieve a level four certificate as effective as a licensing uh method to ensure their their competencies uh to deliver requirements of the industry. So I don't think that's how I think about it. Um I would think about it that that their work environment is their primary concern, not their educational um not the educational focus. Work first, education second. Um no, I I think the um your policy team, and sorry to do that again, policy people um can work through how that might work in in practice. And again, the simplest, most pragmatic approach is going to be like the way you're going to want to implement. You're not going to want to spend a lot of time with people trying to verify um complex uh model systems of determining who is eligible. Because most people don't think, you're lucky if people think about apprentices. It's it's unusual for people to think further uh about people that are trainees. So a- again, your policy team is going to think about how do we make this as pragmatic as possible.
Thanks, Neil.
Uh councillor Southworth.
I just thought of another question. Um so thank you, Chair, for letting me ask it. I'm just wondering about in terms, one of the other groups that we have also included in the targeted group is the community service cardholders. And I'm wondering if, do you have any sense of how much overlap? I know with tertiary students, uh there is some overlap there, quite potentially quite a lot. Do you know if there would be a lot of overlap similarly with this particular group, the apprentices and trainees, or or not so much?
Don't know enough about it to comment with any authority.
That's great. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much, uh Daryl, for taking time and um checking us out and making that very valid submission. So thank you very much. We appreciate it and um have a good day.
Thank you.
Bye for now. Thank you. Right, the next person, Daniel McNeil. Can you hear me? Are you online?
Chair, here. We currently don't have anyone online at the moment.
We don't. Uh so we've got a bit of a break then because Luke's not coming either, is he?
Correct.
Uh what about Mary Ann Ward? She's not online? No, there's no.
Not yet. No.
All right, so we'll just have a wee lull for a minute and you can let us know um um when the next person's online.
Will do.
Right, have we got um Mary Ann Ward?
Yes.
Are you, are you online, Mary Ann?
I am. Um there we go. That's me.
Oh, hello. Thank you very much for coming along. So I just uh explained that we have the 10 minutes now allocated to you. Um and then we can, you can get, you can speak for the whole 10 minutes or you can go for five or six minutes. It's up to you and we might ask you some questions. Uh so thank you, thank you very much for making your submission. We really appreciate you giving your time today. So over to you.
Okay, thanks. Hello, my name is Mary Ann Ward and my submission is to do with air quality, to do with ag recovery containers. People purchase chemicals for use on their farms, et cetera, and then they dispose of these empty chemical containers in these 20-foot ag recovery containers. Um there are 70 of these containers over the country, most are located in recovery parks. I don't know how they're managed. There's a certain amount of paperwork and staffing and qualifications that's needed. And there are at least two that are not in recovery parks. We live in the middle of Fairleigh. We've been in our home for 20 years. And one of these containers is over our fence, managed by PGG Wrightsons, our neighbour. It's been there for about a year, I think, but we didn't realise until summer got narrower, when we had this ginormous smell, something I've never, ever smelt before. It was disgustingly atrocious. It gets in your nose, your skin, your hair, your lungs. We've had to shut the doors. I had to open, I had to close the window one night because the smell was so bad, it woke me up. Our house is on residential land and next door is commercial land. These things vent out the top, the sides, the back. And next door, this was completely mismanaged over the summer in the heat. And this is why we had the most disgusting, choking smell. Container was full and in the heat with the wind, the breeze came through the top and took the smells out the back and over the fence. The windows on it were wa- were open. They're not supposed to be open. The empty containers are supposedly triple runst. I don't know where it's done, but they are contaminated by their contents. Volatile organic compounds, carcinogenic gases, who knows? I've emailed and phoned so many people in agencies, WorkSafe, Medical Office, Office of Health, Minister for the Environment, Parliamentary Commissioner for the Environment, local MP, local mayor and ECAN, of course. The problem is that this container is fully compliant. But there seems to be no rule about where to locate these in relation to people's homes. This container has now been moved away from the fence about 20 metres. There are arrangements now to empty it once it's half full instead of full. And ECAN is working through the science of all this to find the right equipment to monitor the type of gases and the amount that comes out. And this equipment will go on to the container. Sure, I've, makes me feel a little bit more safe knowing that this will be done, if it's done. But I know and you know that this should not be next to where people live. For us, we have to trust the management of this, when obviously this has been mismanaged before, so wrong. There are only two in the country that there have been complaints about. This is one of them. One is in Geraldine, one in Geraldine is right in the middle of town, next to a church and a kindergarten, also in the care of PGG Wrightsons. Whether the people in their homes are healthy or not, sure, it has nothing to do with us at all. But for me, but for people who are vulnerable, this is really, really wrong on so many levels. For me, at the end of last year, I was diagnosed suddenly with stage four lung cancer, then told in January that it was in my brain as well. And when I asked the radiology oncologist how long she thought it had been in my brain and she said, a few weeks. I am now a vulnerable person, but that should make no difference as to where these containers are put. I was told that containers wouldn't use this system if it was in a recovery park. Most of them are in recovery parks and I've talked to a few farmers now, so I know that this is completely untrue. Somebody needs to own up to the gap in the setting up of these things. There needs to be a buffer zone between where these and where people live, where people pray, where people gather, where they learn. What would happen if you found one next to your fence or your mother's fence or your grandchildren's home? I am sure you would do the best to get it moved. And finally, this is just to sum it up, two things for the future. There needs to be thought going into making clear rules about where this type of thing should be located in relation to where people live their lives. Buffer zones. Sure, we're right next to a resident, we're residential next to a commercial and it's probably a small town thing that's caught this rule up. People aren't aware of small towns and the way they work. And for now, I would love to see the container moved away from next door and from Geraldine. I know that there are rules and trying to fix the monitoring equipment and make it happen, but it shouldn't be there. Away in the future, away from people and away from us. That's it. Thank you for listening.
Oh, thank you uh very much, uh Mary Ann, and I did read your submission. So thank you for putting it in writing and thank you for coming in today because it takes a lot of effort to do that. So thank you. Um councillor Elizabeth Mackenzie has a question. Over to you, Liz.
Yeah, yeah. Hi, Mary Ann.
Hi, Liz.
Hi, so I've got a question. Um so I guess I just want to know, um so just to be clear on what you would like to see from Environment Canterbury, are you wanting um something like a review of the rules around where these are placed? Um are you wanting to see um more monitoring or more staff or um more funding? Or um are you wanting to see um some sort of exemption when they're put in recovery parks? So that people don't have to pay to to put it, you know, because normally when you go to the recovery park, you have to pay a fee. And that might stop people from, you know, putting these. I mean, what sorts of things would you like to see?
Well, I think this is probably going to be a bigger problem than just here. And so I suppose there needs to be staffing and monitoring equipment because I don't know if that exists at all. Um I know trying to find the right monitoring equipment is going to be another problem. But definitely rules keeping it away from houses. I don't know what the rules are now. I suspect it says commercial property. It shouldn't be anywhere near houses. And in many small towns, it's commercial and residential up against each other. Um does that answer the question?
Yeah, so I guess that would be around sort of zoning and planning.
Definitely, yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Think thinking of people.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, I went on mute. Um yes, well, um is there anything else you'd like to say?
I don't think so. I'm pleased to have got this far. I really hope it gets solved. Um it's been my obsession for a while since I've finished teaching 42 years at the end of the year. And just, this is it, this is what it's come to, you know? This is my life now.
Well, thank you very much for taking your time to do that. It's really important and I'm sure everybody around the table would agree. Uh so we will, um I know our staff will already be on to it, but we will talk with staff about what other options we've got. So it's really good that you've highlighted to us.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you very much too. So so have a good day and thank you sincerely.
Thank you very much. Bye.
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 All right, so we are on to um the next person, Matthew. Are you online, Matthew?
Yes.
Hi, Matthew. Welcome. Thank you. Thank you very much. Coming on. So let me just tell you that we have up to 10 minutes.
Yep.
And during that 10 minutes, you can speak for the whole time if you want to. Or it's probably good to speak for about five minutes and then we can ask you any questions or get any other comments. So over to you. Thank you very much.
I'm gonna talk to a short PowerPoint presentation.
Okay.
The main point of my presentation that unintended discrimination around public transport towards the disabled community. Only within the the my ability and it's over sick sick effect on our ECAN hate will issues about how much money they try my ability scream and because of transport is hard for people who need need um capability. Even after that's suffering complete to the best wish for example. Um if we have a forty dollar ticket fare, um you need to pay twenty dollars. At the moment, it's only ten dollars, but it's it's still above. Um the fair structure a possible station integrated to do with the public transport system with the same fear structure. And take no measures to improve accessibility. Being more welcome to disabled people and to encourage people to use their system. At the moment, even though the best system is accessible, um it's not very welcome. And do you visibility stay steady to fire? If it is feasible to do a door to door service. And I'm gonna stop saying my. And it's. This is my presentation.
Thanks, thank you, thank you very much. Yes, and as you point out in your submission, we do have a door to door service in Timorou. A My Way service, so you obviously know about that.
Yeah, I do.
And that works very well.
Apparently.
So you'd like to see that in Christchurch?
Yes. Well, for people who can't use the bus service. For me, I can use the bus service. So I'm not talking about myself because of a bus anyway. But some people can't use the bus system. And I think the cost of taxes are quite. Quite high for people with impairments. Because, as I said, you still have to pay half of a. And the moment is crucial because evening is quite. If we have, if we need taxes.
All right, yeah.
Complete to the bus. First.
Thank you. Councillor Craig Pauling has a question. Councillor Pauling.
Yeah, Kia ora, Matthew. Hey, thanks so much for your submissions. That's really great. Just in terms of the, you said the people who can't use the bus service now. So you said not yourself because you use buses, so that's great. Is there some like scheme where that you can register in terms of that impairment? Is that, is that a system that's currently in place?
Yeah, at the moment, if you can't use the bus system, you apply for disability. And disability is for people who can't use the bus system. And my argument is, is that it only costs me two dollars sixty five. For tip. And if we get a taxi, it costs you up to thirty five dollars per trip. They bring where you're going to.
Yeah, and that's good, Matthew, because what I was just trying to get at is if we do a My Way in Christchurch just for those people, as you suggest, there is a way that we can identify those people. So that, that's really good. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you very much, Matthew. I think that the My Way in Timorou is recognized as a very successful service. So certainly, that's very high on our minds and you've reminded us about that. So thank you very much for pointing that out. And we've really appreciated you spending your time with us today. So thank you very much.
Do you want me to email them?
That would be excellent if you would email it in. That's exactly what we'd like. So thank you very much and have a good day.
Okay.
Okay, bye for now. Bye.
Right, if I can welcome us back to the resumption of the annual plan hearings. My name is Ian Mackenzie and I'll be chairing the session. We'll now begin with the draft annual plan twenty 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 three, hearing sessions two, page fifty three of the agenda, the slides will present the submissions for session two. You will now hear from Sam Shalund. You're, I saw you, you were there, Sam. Hi, Sam. Response four oh four two six eight seven, attachment four point three point one. Sam, we have ten minutes for the whole of your presentation. I'd recommend that you give us a synopsis of your main points and then we can have, and we'll be open for discussion with, for questions of clarity, I should say, from the dancers. So hand over to you, Sam.
Good morning, Kia ora. I'm Sam Shalund. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me today. I just thought I'd make it a little bit clear. I currently work for Christchurch City Council, but my comments today are a personal view and I'm, and they're not part of the council. I'm going to share my views solely on changing the bus fare structure. As you've read my submission, I won't repeat it all. I just want to emphasize a few points. As you can see, I'm also reading from a script because I'm a little bit nervous. Bear with me. I can see why option one would be your preferred option. Free bus fares would appeal to a lot of the community in Greater Christchurch. But what about the people that get the bus that don't fall within your criteria? More people have chosen to live further afield than the central city. As you know, the petrol prices are on the rise, which means people are looking at other means to get into the city, be it carpooling, biking, or using the public transport. You do know there are people out there who will never use the bus due to the industry they work in, or it's just not convenient for them. The city is building infrastructure to accommodate more buses. So more buses hopefully would mean more people using them. So having the right incentive may just get a few more to change their habits. Within my written submission, I stated that my preferred option would be a combination of one and two. This way, you'll be getting the people who may find it financially difficult to use public transport and still offering a great service to those who are currently using it. Let me put it into a bit of perspective. My daily fare from Rolleston to the city before the government subsidy is seven dollars seventy. I use it five days a week. Weekly, this is thirty eight dollars fifty. For me, that's nine long blacks, a ride on the gondola with a coffee at the top, or a new parish school shoes for my daughter. If option two would have been chosen, I'd save eighteen dollars fifty a week. That would mean taking my daughter to the local swimming pool twice. In conclusion, to increase patronage and to be able to sustain it, option two represents a more equitable outcome in inviting more people to use the service as well as being able to preserve the current users.
Thanks, Sam. Now, are there any questions of clarification from councillors? Lauren.
Yeah, thanks for your submission, Sam. My question was just around, obviously, you would benefit personally, financially from option two. And that's great. Do you have any comments on the amount of money that rate payers would pay whether they sort of do use the bus or not? So I think for Sowin, it was about a twenty dollar flat fare per household. Because I think, you know, what we get a lot in submissions is people who, you know, don't want to pay because they don't personally use the bus. But do you have any comments about that?
I, in my job in council, I also hear quite a lot about that. But from a personal side, I would hope, there's always hope, that people would say, okay, I've got to pay this extra money. Maybe I will just go and try the bus. So it's just, you know, changing people's habits and putting it into a kind of perspective to say, look, the service is here. Please go use it. And it's really not that far. There's, I actually live in Springston and I travel to Rolleston every day to jump on the direct bus because it's quicker.
Thanks, Sam. So just to make absolutely clear, you're saying you'd rather the cost was loaded onto rate payers rather than users of the bus first?
You know, we're all in this together, so yeah.
Yeah, cool. Thanks, Sam. Lauren, your camera keeps freezing. It's a distance camera film, you're not.
You're Sam and.
Hi, Phil.
Very, very nice to see you and thank you for your thoughtful submission. Sam, I'm interested in, in what, when you said you'd, you implied you would support a combination of option one and option two. So in effect, would you kind of like be supporting a hybrid model where there might be both? And if you, if that, if that is the case, I'm just wondering for the first option, where it currently, it's, it's target, it's a targeted group where it will be fare free. Would you, if you're suggesting as a hybrid option, are you really implying that somehow that group should also pay a koha alongside the, the other flat fare? I'm just not, just wonder what, if you could sort of clarify how you would see option one being part of the hybrid?
I am all for, you know, students and the people that can't financially get the bus for it to be free. You know, I have been in that situation before, so I can understand that. But you have to, in my mind, it's keeping the people that are currently getting the bus, sustaining those people. You know, having the cheaper fare. I'm not saying that I need to go free because I can afford the bus. I'm sorry, my lights keep going off. I can afford the bus and I do want to help those other people. But you know, you've got to try and keep the people that are on the bus, on the bus.
Thank you, Sam.
Thanks, Phil. Thanks, Sam. Grant.
Thanks, Sam. Just my question about your favoring of option two. There are two parts to that. One is the flat fare for the two dollars. The other part is a single zone across, and you haven't got multiple zones. Of the two, which is the most attractive to you? The idea of a single zone? Or the idea of the cost or both?
Probably the flat fare. You know, it'd make it easy for everyone. When people start talking about zones and boundaries and things, you sort of tend to sometimes lose people. So having said to someone, look, it's a flat fare of two dollars, I think it's just going to be easier.
Thank you. Thanks, Sam. Thanks, Grant. There are no other questions. I think you've presented very clearly. Thank you, Sam. And thank you for your time and your effort in coming to present to us.
Awesome. Thanks, guys. Kia ora.
The next submitter is Nathaniel Hertz Indiga. We have you online, Nathaniel.
Chair Mackenzie, he's not here. The next two are not here. We have Doug Selman, though, that's online.
Okay, so is it appropriate then to skip to Doug Selman?
Yes, because then if they come in, we can take them after that.
Thank you. Doug, if you're there, your response was four oh four two seven double O, page sixty four. And I think you were online when I said to the previous, to Sam, that we have ten minutes in total. And if you could give us a summary of your, brief summary of your written submission and emphasize any points you missed to make. And then we'll have time for questions. Thank you, Doug. Over to you.
Am I up now?
You're up there now, Doug. Welcome, welcome.
All right. You're, you're, we're, we're running a little early. That's, that's good. Thank you very much.
You lost some, some letters.
Okay, right. And this is the first time I've used Teams as well. So, so I've learnt something already and it's not even lunchtime. But thanks very much for the, for the opportunity. I'm just, by way of introduction, I'm a semi-retired professor at the Christchurch School of Medicine. I've got a chair in psychiatry and addiction medicine. So this is a long way away from public transport in a way. Although the issue, I heard the last submitter talk about habits and how to change habits. And I, I, I think that that essentially is, is the challenge. I live in Ireland and since I lost most of my sight, I've been a regular bus user for the last ten years. But now that I'm over the age of sixty five, I, I, I'm getting it free. So I guess I'm speaking as someone without vested interest. And what, what's, what's really on my mind, and I guess it's at the back of all of our minds, is that we're in serious trouble as a globe. And, and I'm, in, in some ways, I'd like to speak as an Ireland citizen, but I'm speaking as a global citizen. We have less than ten years or so to really sort the amount of carbon we're putting into the, the atmosphere. And New Zealanders are amongst the highest in the world per head of population in terms of how much carbon we're pushing up there. So we need really bold, you know, really bold moves, not just tweaking and fiddling around with the system. We, we need some really strong signals. And, and it was for that reason I rejected all three options. I think they were just not, not going nearly far enough. And, and I, I think the last time I actually submitted to a local government committee like this was in relation to the cycleways. And the, the Christchurch City Council, you know, along with EK and I think, have done a fantastic job with cycleways and encouraged a lot more people to use bikes and it's, it's accelerating. And I must say that I'm back on, on the back of a tandem now and enjoying those cycleways that the investment has been made and it's changing people's behaviour. And it's making Christchurch one of the best places in, in the country to live. So this is all a prelude to saying, I, I think that we really should advocate for free public transport for everybody. And if you did that, then you, you could really do something like what we've now got with cycleways. We, we don't charge for the cycleways, they're free, they're paid through various means and it's changing behaviour. I, I couldn't really see in those three options a, a strong indication, you know, a really strong indication that, that, that we mean business here in Christchurch and we, we want to see a shift from private motor vehicles into, into public transport. Just finally, just a little anecdote. I asked my partner this morning over breakfast, you know, is there anything you'd, you'd say? And she said, she, she teaches maths at ARA. And she said that her, her students have said to her that they, they don't take the bus. It's too, too expensive. They'd rather drive their old cars into the city. And she actually asked them in relation to this, you know, would you, would you take the bus? If, you know, if it was cheap or, or if it was free? And anecdotally, they, they, they said, yes, of course we would. So there is, there does seem to be a barrier to using public transport in, in the fee structure that there is there at the moment. So that, that's all I have to say and, and thanks once again for, for the opportunity.
Thanks, Nick. Ricky, I see you've got a question.
Kia ora, thank you, Doug, for that presentation. I'm also a frequent bus user and I'm in, on a good bus route and I have, and I can afford the bus fare. So for me personally, I feel happy to contribute with the anticipation that my fares will help to contribute to a better service. But I'm happy to also pay to offset the cost for those who can't afford. And that's the sort of juggle that I see. I just wonder if you have anything, you know, what's your view on that? Should we just put more funds in to keep improving the service as well and then have all, all free? Or, you know, is there a balance there? How do you see that?
Yeah. Well, we're on the, on the same bus route, the number three, I think. And it's fantastic, goes every ten minutes. I, 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 I feel the same. And, and when I'm off peak, I, I pay with my MetroCard, you know, and, and I feel I'm contributing. And, and I'm happy to do it. But, but I think it's, it's, it, the system can't depend just on a few people like you and me feeling that altruism. I, I just, I think something much more bold. feeling that altruism. I, I just, I think something much more bold, it would jolt people into really thinking. And, and it's not so much that, you know, the, the, the bottom 20%, we want people in the middle of, we want people in the middle of the normal distribution curve to think public transport rather than cars. And there's a lot of people who, who will use their cars, they can, they can afford both. But it, I, I think the issue really is about change from public, from, from private motor vehicles into, into public transport. And, and for that reason, a really strong signal is required to change human behaviour. But I, I agree with you. And, and I have the same feeling as you. I'm very happy to pay.
Thanks, Doug. Just, just a question of clarification here, Doug, from me as the chair. But you talked about encouraging people to bicycle. Do you not see, do you see that there might be a conflict between free buses and encouraging people on to bicycle?
Um, no, I think we just do, do the whole lot. But what we're talking about here is, um, charging people for cycleways. You know, if there was a charge on the cycleways, I mean, that would be the, the equivalent. But we've, we've built the cycleways and they're free for everybody to use their bikes. Um, but here we've got, and I feel the same principle. You know, and we would use, if we had to pay a little, there was an electronic ticker on the cycleways that took a dollar out of every time we, we used the cycleways. I mean, I, I wouldn't mind, but I know that it would reduce people from using the cycleways. And I think any charge, uh, will, will have that impact on public transport.
Thanks, Doug. Uh, Phil, you have a question.
Marina, Doug, Phil Kierwater. We, we go back a long time.
How lovely. Yeah, great.
So Doug, I've got two questions, um, just in relation to your idea around the, uh, PT being free. You're probably aware that there's a lot of, uh, research, particularly from overseas countries, where initially the PT, when it was, public transport, when it was free, was successful, but later on it wasn't sustainable. Um, and so I'm just wondering if you might comment on that. My second question, Doug, is I was really impressed with the range of suggestions you had around future projects for, for, for when we in the future have a, a, um, a levy, a levy for climate change. And I was particularly interested in the one about assisting people to move away from rivers and the coast. So I wonder if you might comment on that too, Doug?
Oh, wow. Um, okay. Um, well, I, my understanding was that the, it, it, the unsustainability was seen as an economic issue. And, uh, there is, we have all the wealth we need in New Zealand and we, you know, we, we have all the wealth we need in, in Christchurch and Canterbury. But the obscene thing is that a lot of the wealth is locked up in land and, uh, you know, the top 10% of the, of, of our citizenship. They've got multiple houses, multiple holiday homes. Most of those homes, uh, don't have people in them. And then at the bottom 10%, we've got people living on the streets and, and I see them as patients. You know, so I feel I'm living in a very unequal society and I, 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 I really despair about that. And, and I, I guess that, that, that despair is a little bit in what you're hearing in my voice about calling for, for free public transport across the board. It will help so much the people at the bottom. And I, and I would say the, the bottom 50% and at the same time deal with the major issue of, of climate change. Now, in terms of coastal property and so on, we've really got to start encouraging people to, to start moving and, and providing some incentives. And I, I haven't thought this through, Phil. Um, and, and I'm, I'm sure that you, you're much more knowledgeable than I am in this area, but some kind of incentive, incentivization to help people move, um, in, in land is going to be required, I think.
Thank you very much, Doug.
Thanks, Doug. And thank you for, uh, taking time and effort to present, uh, to us today. So Nathaniel, that's Indiga. I see you, you came on. Are you still there?
Yes, I'm here.
Cool.
Got it.
Uh, so your response is 41161, uh, page 57. Nathaniel, we have 10 minutes for your talk, presentation. If you could give us a brief synopsis of your, um, written submission and then, uh, chance for, uh, councillors to, uh, talk, uh, ask you questions with clarification. Thanks, Nathaniel.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll, I'll be as brief as possible. So, um, I work a lot in, um, political organizing, youth organizing. And I have since the general elections back in 2020. And so I've got a lot of experience basically trying to get young people involved in politics and involved in being part of, you know, civics and civic discussions. And what I've noticed is that the people who can come regularly are often the ones with wealthy parents who have the time and the energy and the money to drive their kids into town, um, all the ones who have their own cars. And you really notice, um, people coming, people will come once or twice, um, from, um, lower income families or low details schools, and then they'll stop coming. And it's because it's difficult. It's really difficult if you're a young person to, um, shell out their money every day, um, to get into town. And it's the only option a lot of, a lot of people have. So it's a big barrier, I think, for, um, being, just being part of the city, not just politically. And I see that a lot. And just from a personal experience point of view, it's, I know it's quite different, but I remember going to the, the Mathadiki fireworks display last year. Over in New Brighton, when there was free, um, free buses for everyone. Um, and I, the difference was huge. It was really just lovely to see, like, the, the level of involvement, the sense of it as a civic event, um, the, the, the level of really genuine diversity on, on the buses, you know, just everyone from all over the city, um, together. Um, you know, clearly lots of, lots of people from, um, you know, from, from the east of the city, lots of people from, from the west, everyone sort of like, you know, um, travelling together and drawing the fireworks together. And I think we could just have, we could have more of that in the city. We could have more of that sense of everyone able to be involved in civic events. And just more, seeing more young people in the city, for them to be a, a place they can just go easily and hang out, you know, whenever they feel like. So as a kid, I did, I did like drama classes and writing classes, um, had like a pretty stable family, um, you know, not super wealthy, but definitely, you know, um, enough money to, to pay for my bus fare or to give me a ride, um, if I needed it, you know, across town, to, to a drama class or to a theatre or something like that. And I really don't want, uh, our kids who are from lower income families, uh, who really want to be involved in, in extracurricular activities. I don't want them like with families in tight budgets to have to ask their parents every time for taking a bit of money out of that budget just so they can get across town. Um, every time they want to do an extracurricular activity, having to take more money out of that really tight budget they have already. So I think going with the, the option of, you know, free fares, um, would just be really, was really good for young people. It would just give them such a chance to be more involved in the city. So I urge you to do that. Um, thanks.
Thanks, Nathaniel. Uh, questions, anybody? So, uh, Nathaniel, I, I, um, here we are, Claire.
Yeah, thanks. Um, trying to get my video on here, trying to spritz screens here. Sorry about that. Um, thank you, Nathaniel. Um, I'll just put my camera on, even though it might not be a pretty picture. In your submission, um, under the question around why you support the selected bus option, you, um, suggested it'll make public transport higher quality and more frequent for everyone. And you've, you've talked about how it'll make a more, um, affordable commute for those who need it. Sorry, could you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Can you just, um, explain how you think the free fare option for something like 47% of our current, um, patronage would actually make that transport higher quality and more frequent for everybody? Please?
Yeah, so, um, generally, I mean, this is a thing in other cities. And I'm sure you that will have seen this in the free fares campaign submissions. Which is why I didn't want to get too much into the figures because they've got all that covered. You know, you generally see that when you have free fares, for, you know, young people, overall public transport use increases a lot. Um, and that brings a bit more, can, you know, bring a bit more money into the system, but also it just, it means the buses get crowded again. You know, that's the main thing. I think the main reason why there's a lot of resistance to properly funding public transport at the moment is because you see buses riding around empty. Um, and I used to live in Mount, you know, Mount Pleasant and I saw this all the time. And I think if we, if we had a bus system that people felt like they could actually use and they had buy-in for, and they saw buses full with people going around, there'd be a lot more appetite, um, for more frequent services. And, um, yeah. Uh, I also think that, like, if, if children are able to ride, um, to school and stuff for free, then it actually makes it easier for parents to take the bus as well. Um, you know, I had this when I was going to school, my dad would always give me a lift to school, me and my, me and my brother. And if he didn't have to do that, then he would actually be incentivized to use public transport. So I think it has knock-on effects. Um, and obviously there's a big cost involved, but I think you'll also, you will see more people beyond those targeted groups using public transport more often. Um, and more public support for public transport, as we've seen with the, the gold card, um, introduction. Um, yeah.
Thank, thanks, Nathaniel. Now, in, in your verbal, in, in what you've said this morning, uh, you stressed that going out to a national event at New Brighton, um, is, is, if for sake of argument, uh, a budget didn't allow us to go to the option one in, in its entirety, if, uh, would you, would you, would, would targeting specific events make up some of the shortfall of, uh, this connectivity for young people you're talking, you're describing?
Yeah, I guess. But, um, I mean, that's, that's, you know, it's a bonus, but it's obviously a small part of it. And I guess you, you obviously do have the money in the budget, otherwise you wouldn't be asking people if you wanted, if you could do it. So, uh, but yeah, it's obviously it's great always to, to provide free, free transport for events. Yeah.
Thanks, thanks, Nathaniel. Any other questions? Uh, thank you. So can I thank you, Nathaniel, for coming here and making very clear, um, an eloquent submission. We, we have 10 minutes for the session. Uh, we, we should have, all councillors should have read your submission. But if you can just give us a quick emphasis on those points you think are the most salient. And that'll allow time for councillors to ask further questions or clarification. So over to you, Dallas. You're on mute again.
Oh, sorry. Um, I, I had been asked you, so I didn't, I, I missed half of what you were saying earlier. Um, with the.
With the timing. We've got 10 minutes for the session. If you could, the councillors will have read your submission. If you could sum up, sum up the most salient issues within your submission briefly, and then that'll leave time for questions. So it's up to you. Uh, over to you now, Dallas.
Uh, um, uh, uh, so with the submission, um, I, I always like to try and have a, have a point. So I thought that when it came to hearing about the proposal, um, and aligning it with my current view of where I am in life as a uni student and everything, I thought it was important to, um, outline how, how, how it would affect me and how it would be, um, uh, how it would affect others going forward and how it could possibly benefit them. And so I'm pretty sure that knowing, uh, doing a bit of research into the proposal and everything, I, I thought that it was definitely something that would benefit myself, um, with my financial issue around understanding everything that's going on, um, especially with the times of COVID that, um, we face. So most importantly, I'm pretty sure that allowing people to, um, have something like this positively benefit their, their income. Especially when they don't necessarily earn quite so much, um, like with me being on a, uh, student income with their loan living costs, I thought that by decreasing the, the value of, um, fares and all that, it would definitely help me in a long way to be able to access, um, travel and everything like that. And also be able to have a better, um, way of, and you know, finances of mine, especially when it came to, um, being able to access public transport and getting to places I needed to. Um, because currently, um, for me, public transport was definitely a bit too expensive. So I would sometimes struggle to get to places. And I'm pretty sure that I wasn't the only one that had that view. So I, I just thought it was important to have my, have my voice and be able to allow myself to potentially make a difference. Um, it's, because using, using the bus, um, ever since I've moved to Christchurch, it's, it's almost been a part of my almost day-to-day life. And um, being a tertiary student for the last, well, four of the last five years, it's always been my access to get around the places. And, um, in those four to five years, having the prices, um, increase as well as moving out of home has made it harder to access them. So sometimes it would be harder to accommodate how would I pay rent as well as how much money could I put into bus fares and all that sort of stuff. So I think it was important to understand that going, going forward, um, as long as it would be beneficial for multiple people, that it, it would be a way, a positive way going forward, especially for those in tertiary education who have, um, limited, limited funds. But that's pretty much.
Thanks, Dallas. Thank you for that. Now, questions from any, uh, questions or clarification from any councillors, please. Uh, Vicky.
Kia ora, Dallas, and thank you for, um, sharing your personal experience with the bus. I've got two questions. So one is, I'm, I'm curious, you say you've moved into Christchurch and used the buses here. And I wonder if you've come from somewhere else and using the bus as a, something that you're familiar with, or whether it's something that you could connect into when you came to Christchurch. And then also just, just noting that you say you've been studying now for four to five years. So I'm guessing you're sort of heading towards moving out into workplace, perhaps, heading towards 25, which is when we've got that change in pricing. You'd start paying full fare, also potentially heading towards maybe, um, more expensive accommodation and the like as, you know, if you earn and so on. So you'd be looking at, um, maybe the all contribution to the rates would be higher. Do you feel like that's something like that? Is that that balance between, um, you know, getting something free while you're younger, but then paying more when you get a bit older and more established in the workplace? Does that feel like something you recognise? Is that, are you comfortable with that as an, as a way forward? Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Um, to answer your first question, yes, I came from Timor before I moved here to Christchurch. And obviously the bus system down there isn't as big, but I was able to familiarize myself with that system. And prices down there were a little bit cheaper. Um, but that's probably still the infrequency of buses as well as there was probably only four or five buses running around the city at the time. And to answer your second question, yes, I, I'm coming to, I'm a second year, um, primary school student at University of Canterbury. And I've always seen myself as, using, using the bus has always been a temporary thing while I'm growing up to get around places. And as a student in tertiary education under 25, I think it definitely helps the financial situation, not having to worry about it so much. Because by the time I get to 25, I personally hope that I'll be one or two years into a role as a teacher.
Okay. And, and sorry, just to clarify that at that point in time, if your fares are going up and you're. And, and sorry, just to clarify that at that point in time, if your fares are going up and you're, um, you, you feel comfortable with that, um, additional contribution at a later stage in your life to the public?
Thank you, we're running out of time. Uh, you, you've had a question, I've got Megan who's got a question lined up, so go to Megan.
It wasn't quite answered, but that's fine, thank you.
Megan.
Thanks for the submission Dallas. Hi, um, just, just a quick question. Um, you mentioned that, um, you see using the bus as a temporary thing for you while you're a student. Um, what will we need to change or do to make it attractive for you when you're a graduate or in, or in later life?
Um, personally, um, like, I feel a temporary thing these days because I've got a, I've got a bike. And from where I live, most of the time I try to bike. It's more of a thing, if I go to Prebleton for football or if it's a rainy day sort of thing. So I think it, it all, it all depends really on where I might be living later in life. Like where I live to what I access today. Um, it's more of a 50 50 thing, whereas say if I was living in Rangiora in a couple of years and I'm still playing football over in Prebleton, then definitely be a lot more appealing to use it then. Because there's no way I'll bike all the way over there.
Thanks Dallas. Now, just before you go Dallas, Christina, is, is Jolien White online?
No, we don't have anybody else on hold.
Right, well, in which case, Vicky, I'm sorry I cut you off before, but, um, can we go back to your extended question, please?
Sorry, it was just trying to get, yeah, because I asked two in a row, I think the backend got slightly missed. So it was really, um, just that you didn't, you didn't quite clarify, um, the, once you're into established employment and you no longer qualify either through age or, or hopefully income for that zero fare, that you feel that at that point in time, you'd be comfortable with contributing to the bus service and paying a standard fare? Is that, does that, is that reflect your thinking or? Um, yeah.
Yeah, I'm going off what I was saying to the one about the, depending on where I live in the next couple of years. Uh, it'll just, so if I was living in Rangiora, like I said, and I've graduated studying there, going to Prebleton, I've definitely, as long as I wasn't being silly with my finances, I'd definitely be happy to contribute. Um, in, in later years, because I've always enjoyed using the buses. And it's always been my way of exploring Christchurch so that when it came to understanding how to get to places, I knew how to get there without having to use Google Maps or something like that.
That's great, thank you.
Thanks, thanks Dallas. So thank you for making effort to come in and talk to us this morning.
Thank you.
So Christina, I take it Jolien White hasn't come online, has Gillian Freiter come online?
Uh, thanks for the opportunity to speak to my submission. Really just had one thing I wanted to say. Um, to start with, I guess, to point out, I've struggled to pay my rates a little bit over the last couple of years. COVID's been hard for a lot of people. And it hasn't been easy, um, to keep up with. However, I also have to acknowledge that struggle is a slightly relative term. Um, and that I've always managed to travel to the doctors or travel to visit friends, um, travel to see family, uh, travel for social events. Um, so, uh, so struggle is a little relative there because I've got friends, um, for whom that's not the case. And, and, and for them, the costings on your website show the rates increases a lot smaller than the savings to be made. Um, and so for, for those reasons, I'm, I'm pretty keen on proposal one. Um, I, I realize that it's not a magic bullet. Um, it feels to me like, uh, climate change particularly, but also social equity and inequality are two huge juggernauts that we're just really slowly trying to come to terms with. Um, and that we need to find ways to come to terms with them as a community, not just thinking about individual things. Um, and so for these sort of three reasons, um, I, I really love that it's a two-year trial. Um, I really like the idea of policy by iteration. Um, it's just a great idea. And so in two years' time, we'll have more data than we've ever had before. And I, and we'll know who was right, we'll know whether the attractors were right and, and that this is just impossible. Or, um, or whether those in favor of it were right. And it will make a massive difference to low income families, um, and hopefully get a few cars off the road. Um, I, I also really like the under 25s, um, aspect of it, the, the sort of long-term change, um, the, the attempted habit change and attitude change that will give us way more options in the future. Um, and the, the equity aspect. So although, uh, there'll be a slight cost increase to me, um, although I don't personally necessarily gain from this, um, unless you do option one and two, um, which would be pretty great. Um, I'm still really in favor of it for those three reasons. Um, and, and I think the cost, the increased cost to my rates, um, is small enough that, um, that I can still, that I can still manage that. So that's the main thing I wanted to say really, that I get that there's a bit of a cost. Um, but thinking from a citywide perspective, um, we need to try things. Um, it's not going to be a magic bullet. Luxembourg trial had a, had a few surprises in it, I guess, looking at the outcomes of that. Um, but nothing that says to me, we shouldn't be trying, um, everything we, everything we can.
Thanks Julian. Uh, questions, clarification, councillors, please. One.
Kia ora, thanks for your submission, Jolien. Um, I just wanted to pick up on your comment about sort of option one and two being sort of an ideal situation. Um, particularly in light of your comments around, you know, people struggling to pay rates and like yourself. Um, do you think, because obviously if we did option one or two, and two, the rate burden would be incre- would increase across, um, greater Christchurch? Do you think, um, that would still be the best situation in terms of, um, the most people, I guess, benefiting from these things, um, albeit rate payers would be paying more money, basically?
Yeah, I mean, I, I've, I've only seen the calculations that you've done on each of the options separately, and I haven't added them together. Um, the reason that I like the idea of one and two, um, is because, uh, I would probably, I would probably get on the bus. When I'm in Littleton and just getting through the tunnel to cycle is, um, is crazy expensive for a 400 meter trip. Um, and so the increased rate, um, cost there, to my mind, would be offset by me leaving the car at home um, way more frequently and using it myself. So, um, yeah, so, but obviously I don't know all the costings, but I, I'm totally in favor of option one if you have to do one of them. Because, um, because we have to fight against the tragedy of the commons and our own brains. But if, um, if I could have anything, I'd take one and two so that, uh, so that I'd get enough benefit to, um, to get through the tunnel cheaply and leave my car at home.
Thank you.
Sorry Jenny, you, uh, Jenny, thank you Jolien, Jenny.
Um, thank you, uh, hello Jolien. Good, good to see you, thanks for making this mission. Um, I'm just interested, I wonder if you've given any thought to any behavioral, parallel behavioral change campaign we might need to have? If we go for option one, like what, what do you think we could best do to, to, to get the public to know about that?
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know for other people, I went into the city, um, I don't go into town all that often, but I went into the city last week and found it quite hard to find parking and, uh, and was kind of grumbling that if it was any more difficult, I'd probably take the bus. Um, it's, it's, you know, it's one of those things, we all want life to be easy, but, um, I would also like a slightly better future. So, um, so anything that sort of makes it a little bit more difficult for me to take my car in, um, I would vote in favor of now, um, and, um, be a little bit sad about when I couldn't take my car in and then be extremely happy about when, um, I realized that it was making me take the bus a lot more often, which is what I would like to try to do. I mean, I, obviously there's no single magic bullet, you must have done all of the workings on this sort of stuff. Uh, we've got to do more to encourage ourselves, um, from not taking the car into the city all of the time.
Yes, thank you very much, and we have done it, but it's good to hear it from people, um, from citizens, so thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I'd just like to say I would support those measures. I, I, I don't, I don't want them to be any more difficult on me than anyone else, but we live in a community and we just have to. So do it, do it for me, thanks.
Thank, thanks.
So, so Jolien, just going back to your issue with getting through the tunnel.
Yeah.
Because you said you liked to bicycle. If there was, uh, if we came up with some sort of solution which would get bicyclists through the tunnel and then allow you to get off the, whatever that solution is and bike the rest of the journey, would that have appeal?
I mean, I would do that every day. Absolutely, I would absolutely have an appeal. Although, um, once I got on the bus, um, if it was raining, I, I would possibly stay on the bus. Um, I'm not sure, I would like to think I would do it every day.
Okay, thanks Jolien. Uh, and thank you, another question, so thank you for taking the time and effort to submit and, uh, come online today. So thank you for that.
Thanks very much, good luck.
Uh, our next submitter is Gillian Freiter. Uh, response, I'll do number 13729, page 81. Uh, and I know Gillian, you're from Littleton as well, as our last submitted. So Gillian, um, you have 10, we have 10 minutes, uh, for your submission and for the second follows. So if you could, um, the, the councillors will have read your submission. And so if we can, if you could just summarize the most salient points, uh, briefly so that we can then allow for discussion. Um, up to you, over to you.
Uh huh. Okay, thank you, hello. Um, so yes, I didn't hear the previous submitter, only just the very tail end. So maybe it's a repeat, I'm sure there's lots of those. Um, but, uh, and mine's pretty simple really. I mean, I did support, uh, the first option, option one, um, was the greatest, um, rate increase, but also good, great benefits for, um, people in Christchurch. Uh, but yes, I just wanted to talk briefly just about, uh, Littleton, the Littleton service. And especially because I take a bike through the tunnel. Um, and I'm also aware that, that other development that I think it's the city council is putting in the bike lockers over at the Heathcote side. Um, which would be good for, for some people, probably wouldn't, I probably wouldn't use it because I live in Corsi Bay. So I have to get to the bus stop to start with. So that means I would use my bike, I, on both sides of the tunnel. Um, but I could see the use for people who live near the, um, near, uh, nearer to the, a bus stop or don't want to bike to the bus, just are happy to walk down. Um, so probably people who live in the main part of Littleton, which is where most people live anyway. Um, but the aspect of that thing is where this is all about considering fear structures and things. Is that at the moment, if you want to take your bike through the tunnel, you have to pay the, um, full fare. I mean, I think fares in Christchurch are actually super reasonable myself. But, um, so, but you do pay the full fare, which you could, um, you could use that fare to get all the way to the airport. So you're paying with MetroCard 265, um, but only going through the tunnel. Um, and then getting off and the same on the reverse home. So I think something to consider, um, what I'd like you to consider is, uh, is perhaps introducing a, a, that, that, uh, a free transport through the tunnel for people with bikes. Um, and that would encourage this use of these bike lockers. But also seeing as I figure that ECAN's not just about buses, of course, about kind of encouraging all kinds of sustainable transport there. It would be definitely encouraging people to use those bike lockers and use their bikes to, um, for transport either the side of the tunnel. Because, yeah, the tunnels are just a massive barrier, basically, to using bikes, especially, or, or walking. Um, yeah, especially bikes.
Thanks Gillian. Uh, and we've actually had various submissions over the last couple of years, uh, with exactly, making exactly the points that you're making about the barrier that the tunnel is. Uh, councillors, any questions, please? So I, I, Gillian, I have a question, and I shouldn't know this, but I'm from, uh, Savoresh, so I'm not as familiar with the logistics of getting around Christchurch as I should be. But once you're through the tunnel, are there good bicycle, um, paths into various parts of Christchurch after that?
Uh, well, so if you get off at Heathcote, which a lot of people would, um, then there isn't from there, but the roads are fairly quiet, I guess, on the backroads. And there will be the Heathcote Expressway, which will come through to, to the lower part of Heathcote. So, um, and so that'd be useful to, to go if you want to travel on a ferry road kind of, uh, route to get into the central city. And other than that, um, it's quite a long way before you get to bike paths, kind of Opaawa, around that way. Um, but there are some quiet streets you can do, take some good backroads to get through there.
Thanks Gillian. Uh, Grant, I see your question.
Hi Gillian.
Hi.
Hi. Uh, just in, in terms of, um, other options, some, some people or some submitters have suggested a combination of option one and option two. Have you thought about that sort of idea as a, as a way of a, a cost, but a reduced cost coming through the tunnel?
Uh, so that's the, option two's the flat fear structure, isn't it, the $2 thing? Um, well, I guess for me, if it was direct comparison, like $2.265, it's not, that's not making much difference really. Um, yeah, and, and I think the only, I, I benefit of the flat fear structure is that it's really simple for people to understand. Because at the moment, generally, a lot of the public might have no idea what it costs. Um, and always tend to verge, veer on the side of thinking that, that, um, public transport in Christchurch is expensive. Um, so I guess I can see some benefits in that $2 flat fear kind of structure. Um, and whether it would help, um, people with bikes or not, yeah.
You froze, you froze, oh, sorry, you're back online again.
Okay, sorry, we have slightly bad connection here. Um, yeah, whether we have $2 or $2.65 for bikes, I don't think would make very much difference. Yeah.
Right, thanks Gillian. Thanks Grant. Any other questions? Now look, uh, thank you Gillian for making the time and effort to, uh, talk to us, uh, on our annual plan. Um, your point, uh, very well made, and, uh, we, we will obviously consider those going forward. So thank you for your time and effort.
Okay, thanks very much again. And everyone, thanks.
As I understand it, Gillian was our last submitter in this session. So we'll now take a break and return at one o'clock, uh, under Vicky's stewardship.
Kia ora, Rachel, thank you. Um, that's 1:10 now, and, um, so if you'd like to start when you're ready.
Oh, thank you so much for your patience, um, Kia ora, and I'm Rachel Hertford. And I'm speaking on behalf of Cut Synthetic Nitrogen Fertilizer Canterbury. We are a collective of people concerned about the impact of synthetic nitrogen fertilizer on the climate and on fresh water and drinking water here in Canterbury. We recognize that Canterbury has the highest dairy stocking rates and also the highest rates of synthetic fertilizer use in New Zealand. We call on ECAN to use its environmental mandate to phase out nitrogen, synthetic nitrogen fertilizer through the RPS and through the land and water review processes that are mandated through gov, the government's essential fresh water reforms. Too many cows and too much chemical fertilizer are rapidly producing, polluting the rivers, lakes and drinking water that we should all be able to enjoy and rely on. The agriculture sector is New Zealand's biggest polluter of the climate, uh, causing 48% of all our greenhouse gas emissions and overloading our rivers and drinking water with nitrogen. Um, specifically, the dairy industry is New Zealand's biggest climate polluter. In short, there has been around a 630% increase in synthetic nitrogen fertilizer use between 1990 and 2019 across New Zealand. And a really significant portion of that has taken place here in Canterbury because of the dairy intensification, uh, at this time. As I'm sure you are aware, uh, synthetic nitrogen fertilizer is a powerful source of global warming emissions. And when applied to land, um, it causes nitrous oxide emissions. Um, nitrous oxide is at least 265 times more effective at trapping heat in the atmosphere than carbon dioxide, and it depletes our ozone layer. Additionally, nitrate contamination Additionally, nitrate contamination in waterways and groundwater is almost entirely due to leaching from cow urine. Um, less than five percent is directly due to fertiliser ni, uh, nitrogen runoff from soil into the waterways. So the repercussions of synthetic nitrogen fertiliser and dairy cows here in Canterbury can be summarised into three categories. Uh, public, um, public health risks, high levels of nitrates in drinking water leading to increased cases of premature births, blue baby syndrome and bowel cancer, unswimmable rivers and loss of aquatic biodiversity, and increased global greenhouse gas emissions leading to more severe weather patterns. Uh, for example, the floods in, in Canterbury in December twenty twenty and June twenty twenty-one. And so our group, Cut Synthetic Nitrogen Fertiliser Canterbury, um, have proposed solutions to help mitigate these problems. Um, and we have four. One is, and firstly, an immediate ban on any new dairy conversions. And, and secondly, uh, the introduction of a timeframe for the reduction in dairy stock numbers. Number three, a levy on synthetic nitrogen fertiliser use. And number four, a transition to regenerative farming. The benefits of regenerative farming, uh, are huge and include carbon sequestration, improved soil health and reduction in water pollution. Now, just getting back to the levy on synthetic nitrogen fertiliser, as today you have asked for suggestions for future funding for responding to climate change. The purpose of the levy would be to tax pollution as source and would need to be large enough to disincentivise the use of synthetic nitrogen fertiliser and also to fund Environment Canterbury to deal with climate related issues and to address the effects of water contamination and restore our waterways to good health. However, the main focus really needs to be on the phase out of synthetic nitrogen fertiliser while simultaneously limiting its application through a sinking cap to reduce its use over time. We need to turn off the tap now to reduce emissions and other harm from synthetic nitrogen fertiliser rather than solely relying on tools to mitigate or adapt to climate change, which is what a, you know, a levy would be. It would, it would just be a mitigation tool. Um, and on a side note, I heard just yesterday that the cost to treat nitrate contamination in drinking water in Sulun district alone will most likely exceed three hundred and twenty million. That was a quote from Becker. Um, so if you were to add the other districts into the calculations, um, you know, um, for, what, there's four districts, I think, that ECAN covers. Um, then you're looking at over a billion dollars to trade Canterbury's water within the ECAN catchment. And, and that's just a huge, huge, um, price. Um, to respond to a public health issue, um, let alone, you know, thinking about the, the broader issues of, of climate. That's, uh, that's all.
Good. Thank you for that, Rachel. Now, just can I ask councillors, do we have any questions? Several, and I've got one I'd ask as well. I'll ask at the end first time. So, um, we've got councillor Farm first.
Hi, hi there.
Yeah, Kyoda Rachel, thanks for you and your group submission. Uh, my question was just around the nitrogen fertiliser levy. Um, and whether you had thoughts about, you know, cause a, a levy obviously can be, um, in many forms. Um, are you thinking like sort of a one-off charge if, if any property was using synthetic nitrogen fertiliser? Or would you envisage that it's sort of like a, um, I guess per use or kg? Then the cost would increase, that kind of thing. Do you have any other, any comments?
Well, um, the Climate Change Commission, um, last year suggested a levy, uh, per kilogram, I think. Um, similar to how, um, petrol has a levy. Um, so probably, yeah, probably based on, 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 on a weight. Um, but, you know, we're just really just throwing ideas out there.
Cool, thanks for that.
Thank you. And councillor Clearwater, please.
Thank you very much for your submission, Rachel. I just wish we could meet you and your group in person sometime at ECAN. Um, I've got two questions. One is just following Lauren's question. I just wondered if for the, the levy on synthetic nitrogen, would you accept that that be phased in? Um, that's my first question. My other question is in relation to the bus fare structure, which, um, you've, in your written submission, where you, you told us about. And it looked like you, uh, preferred a combination of option one and option two. I just wondered, eh, with those, um, if, if, if there's, if we were to have the flat fare, um, and, and also, uh, low, low cost targeted groups, um, being supported. Would, would that, would you want the, um, option one to be fare free? Or are you talking about some kind of hybrid for that suggestion?
Personally, I think some kind of hybrid. Um, but, yeah, a hybrid, let's go with a hybrid. Um, and, um, right, so your first question, um, the phasing, the, the, the phasing of, and of, uh, a levy. Um, yeah, well, I was really disappointed last year that, that levy was put on hold. Um, uh, I mean, climate change is here and now, so really, um, I, I think, you know, I'm sure, I think it needs to be immediate. But I really want, um, ECAN to recognise that this, that's just a Band-Aid on a much bigger issue. Um, and really, we need an immediate ban on any dairy, new dairy conversions. We need a, a timeframe for a reduction in dairy stock numbers. And we really need support from ECAN for a transition to regenerative farming. And I know many farmers have already started with that, but, um, you know, uh, assistance would be, would be huge. Um, but, yeah, does that answer your question?
It does. Look, thank, thank you very much, Rachel.
Thank you. I have a question from councillor Mackenzie. Ian Mackenzie.
Yeah, thank you, Rachel, for a very clear, uh, submission. Um, I, I was just wondering, this concept of, uh, blaming nitrogen fertiliser and dairy farming for the end of the world is is good, I get it. Um, I certainly read about it often enough. I was just wondering whether your, your tax on nitrogen fertiliser or tax on dairy farming in general, uh, would be expanded to take in other sources of pollution such as Christchurch City, for example, the Greater Christchurch area urbanisation is clearly, um, uh, well, some, some would suggest that that might be contributing to greenhouse gas, gases in some form and water pollution in other forms and, and other issues, um, given the intensity of development within your Greater Christchurch area.
Right. Well, thank you for your question. Perhaps I could just, uh, flip it back to you, um, councillor Mackenzie. How do you feel about a billion dollar price tag to make the water, uh, drinkable for the residents of Canterbury?
Um, the, the, there's no suggestion that the nitrate levels in any of the drinking water in Canterbury are actually that dangerous given that if we used Greater, Greater London as an example, where the nitrates settle at an average of six and a half parts per million, uh, which is higher than almost all rural areas apart from one or two exceptional wells. Uh, and there's not the great health, health issues within London City. So I just, um, I'm interested. And, and, and clearly Christchurch City has an effect on water quality and greenhouse gases and things. Um, I, I understood next to dairy farming, which is clearly the worst, uh, the building was quite bad for, um, greenhouse gas emissions. So would you stop all building?
Yeah, um, and flipping it back to, um, you know, the, the focus of, of, of this is, is responding to climate change and to, um, greenhouse gases. And my focus is ni, synthetic nitrogen fertiliser. Um, and just, just want to just flip it back to the land and water review processes and that New, New Zeal, uh, the essential fresh water refer, reforms have, have really made your mandate very clear, which is, um, the health of the people, the health of the river. And then thirdly, the, um, the health of the business interests. So, um, you know, I just, I think, you know, the mandate's pretty clear. And so I'd really love to see Environment Canterbury to, to lead the charge on that.
Kyoda, thank you for your, um, for your time there and thank you for your, um, for your detailed response to questions. Um, so I really appreciate your time and all your, um, fellow guests and supporters that have come along as well. I can see you all on the screen. Um, so if, if there's no more questions there, then, then, then thank you ever so much for your time. And, um, and we'll move on to our next submitter.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Cheers.
Bye.
Do we have Marlene Lawson off now?
No, I'm sorry, we don't.
Okay. And, and then Alison is the, the, the next submitter is, has advised she can't attend. Okay, well councillors, I guess we adjourn for, um, maybe five minutes and check back in and see if, if any of our next presenters have arrived and we'll pick it back up then. I'm just gonna first have just note that, um, Alison Ross, who was to come earlier, but, um, advised us that she was unable to attend and her attachment is a four point, four point four, and she wanted that noted. So just to do that. And also Joanna Wildish was unable to join us and she gave us some notice and, and her attachment's at four point, four point seven. But I'd just like to say that all the councillors have had all of the submissions in the agenda and they've all been led by councillors. Um, we've now got, um, Selena Coombe from the Sticks Living Laboratory Trust. Um, just, so Selena, I can't see you on the screen. Do you want to put your camera on now? There we go. That's great. Thank you. So, um, just welcome and thank you for your submission. And, um, so I'll invite you to speak and you have, um, ten minutes to present. Um, and maybe try and keep it to slightly less than the full ten minutes. And that gives councillors plenty of time for questions. And so, um, if you'd like to speak to your submission when you're ready, please, please go ahead. Thank you.
Kyoda, um, my name's Bethany from the Sticks Living Laboratory Trust. And beside me, we have Jackie, who's our community coordinator. And Selena is one of our environmental advocates who submitted, um, the submission for us on our behalf. So we'll just share our screen so we can get the presentation up. But the Sticks Living Laboratory Trust, we're a local river care group. Um, we've been officially a trust since two thousand and two and we're approaching our twenty, twenty years. So twentieth birthday coming up soon. Uh, so we were formed out of the Sticks Vision two thousand to twenty forty. And we have a vision three to create a living laboratory for learning and research in the Puhati Kikinui. And, and we also support the other four visions. So this is a council, um, document. And yeah, we've been created and thriving and doing work in the Puhati Kikinui for the last twenty years. Yeah, so we do, we have multiple partnerships, um, with ECAN, um, CCC, uh, Niwai Lincoln University, um, Wollabank Wildlife Reserve. And it's all focused on achieving that learning and research in the Puhati Kikinui. Um, so we also fund some scholars and internships and we also run, um, a range of volunteer activities. Uh, some of our activities have been running for over thirteen years. So this includes water quality monitoring, bird monitoring, ecosystem restoration, and we also support pest control. Um, and we have a board of trustees which manages the trust. Um, and it's supported by various portfolios. Um, an example of that is our advocacy portfolio, um, who have worked together to develop the submission. Now I'll just pass over to Jackie to go through the submission details.
Thanks, Bethany. Um, so throughout the submission process, um, we did come through with a couple of general comments. Um, one being that we as a trust support the climate change levy proposed in the plan as it will help to mitigate the impacts of climate change on the Puhati Kikinui as well as other local river ecosystems. And with the levy, we propose that the funds be allocated to project, projects focused on ecological restoration and the enhancement of waterways, uh, as well as regulatory monitoring of said projects. And in terms of specific recommendations, um, there's three here listed. So putting waterway restoration at the front of climate change actions, focusing on the creation of new riparian habitat corridors and more frequent assessments of ecological monitoring systems. And the trust recommends that Environment Canterbury place waterway restoration at the front of its climate change actions with the main focus on the creation of new riparian habitat corridors. And this is because it will not only increase the native biodiversity of the area, which meets one of the key goals of the biodiversity strategy of Environment Canterbury, but these corridors will also act as a carbon sink while reducing the impacts of climate change through events of increased flooding, sediment and pollution runoff. And riparian habitats also tend to store higher levels of carbon per area than other environments do. And with this, we also recommend that Environment Canterbury assesses its ecological monitoring systems more frequently than the proposed one time per ten years. And we propose a time period of once every five years to ensure that the data collected truly is fit for purpose and to also mitigate the effects of climate change more effectively. Um, with that being, the more often it's monitored, the more quickly you can see, um, any changes and be able to, um, take action appropriately.
And yeah, that's our submission.
Thank you.
There's no need of any questions.
Thank you for that. Would you, I'm just wondering if you want to pop the, there we go. Um, do you want to take that down and then we can actually see you and speak more person, person in a weird virtual sort of a way?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, there we go.
Here we go. A question from councillor Pauling first, please.
Hey Kyoda, Cordua, thanks so much for your submission. Hey, um, I just had a question about, uh, I can see there that you're advocating for a more riparian corridor establishment, which is great. Um, have you considered, how, how do you fit wetland, um, restoration or development into that? Is that part of that or is that something separate to you guys?
Yeah, it's definitely part of it. Um, most of the work that we're doing at the moment is focused on riparian, um, corridor creation. But we do definitely support, um, anything to do with stormwater mitigation, wetlands, riparian corridors, anything to do with the waterways.
Cool, thank you.
Okay, and councillor Farm, please.
Yeah, Kyoda, thank you for your submission. Um, and my question is really along the same lines of councillor Paulings, just on that focus on new, um, riparian creation. Um, cause I know that, you know, the Sticks Living Laboratory, a lot of your work is so grounded in like ecological principles. And, you know, one of the primary ecological principles is like protect what already exists. So do you think, like, in saying that, is your focus on, you know, you asking us to focus on new areas? Um, is that extended to like, um, I don't know, supporting, um, protection of what's already there? If there are existing corridors and working with landowners to protect those as well? Or, or are you thinking more, no, this is about extending, um, existing stuff and, and really focusing on those linkages? Could you expand a bit on that?
Yeah, it's about, like, like you mentioned, um, focusing on those linkages and, um, we want to be protecting what's already there, definitely. Um, and there's quite a few, um, patches of, yeah, ecological corridors that can be connected, certainly in the Puhati Kikinui. Um, yeah, so it, it's kind of both, I guess.
Definitely both, yeah.
Cool, thanks for clarifying it.
Thank you. And now, and I had a que, I have a question around the monitoring. So I'm just wondering if there's something explicit that you've identified where you feel that the monitoring that's currently underway isn't fit for purpose and hence you're proposing the five year? Or is that just something that you've picked up on as best practice or some other driver for suggesting that we should shorten our monitoring review periods?
Um, it was.
Um, it was, I guess, just something that we picked up on. Um, I'm not exactly sure how your monitoring networks, um, function. Um, so I guess if we had a bit more detail on that, that would, um, be, be right.
Ten years just seemed like.
Quite a long time. Um, cause the plan is for the next 10 years. So just, I guess, one time and within the 10 years seemed not quite enough.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. And that, I think if there is something that comes up, then maybe you'd like to share that with us. If you have some piece of specific information, then we've got that open dialogue as an organisation. So, so please, you know, keep it, get that conversation going. So that's, that's lovely. Thank you. I don't see any more hands coming up for questions for you. Um, I appreciate your time and, um, so, so thank you very much. And you're welcome to stay on or. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, welcome to the resumption of the annual plan hearings. I'm councillor Elizabeth McKenzie and I'm going to be chairing this session until 5pm. Um, I also co-chair the climate change action committee. So I'm really interested to hear your thoughts about the proposed climate levy and what you think should be done with it. Um, so we, this is actually session four of the annual plan hearings. Um, and if you go to page 121 of your agenda, um, then it lists the people in the session. Um, so it's three o'clock now. So we're going to be hearing from, um, James Martin. And, um, his submission is attached. Um, let me just get page up. Yeah, on, uh, page one, two, two of the agenda. So, um, over to you, James.
Thank you. Um, so my understanding is that, uh, I've got 10 minutes to talk and I'll try and make it as brief as I can and explain some of the science behind, or the chemistry behind, uh, what we've got with water chlorination. Since 2018, uh, since March of 2018, uh, Christchurch took on, uh, chlorinating water. Uh, originally meant to happen only for a period of about a year while they were raising the wellheads, water wellheads. Uh, we've well gone beyond, even though that project also took a little bit longer, um, we've gone well beyond that time period. Uh, there was a discussion last year with council for us to finally get rid of the chlorine and, uh, chlorination of the water system, um, here in Christchurch. And that was overturned on the last day. Um, and so that was, um, where we had a little bit of a difficulty is that literally, five days before we, they were going to stop the chlorination, the Ministry of Health came in and overrode it. Now, um, chlorination systems in the world basically use two different types of chemicals. There are the active ingredients. There are other chemicals in it, but the primary active ingredients around the world for chlorination is both chlorine and chloramine. Now I know they sound a bit confusing, uh, and sound very similar. The difference is chlorine is what we in, in the chemistry world call CL2. Um, so it's an, uh, it's a gas, um, but it also at room temperature. But, uh, it will be in a liquid or will suspend itself in a liquid up until about 21 degrees afterwards. Um, so if you can imagine, that doesn't stay in the water very, very long. It does aerate. And so to give you a longevity, everyone has turned to using chloramine to make it get through the rest of the system to be active. Chloramine has a boiling point of 170 degrees. So even if you boil water, you still have it bonded to the water molecules, uh, even in steam format. Um, so, um, it is not one that goes away. Chloramine is actually part of the ammonia family. It's ammonia is NH3, chloramine, uh, is NH2Cl. So it has just chlorine molecule to replace hydrogen. And, uh, dichloramine is NH, uh, CL2. So, um, as we know, there is no safe limit on any of the ammonia family products. So although chloramine sounds like it is part of the chlorine family, it is not. It's part of the ammonia family. And the, the amount of healthy safe parts in the water is zero parts per million. Um, we are over that level. And, um, I'm the one that unfortunately suffers from it the most because I have a VP shunt, which is, it's, it goes, uh, from the centre of my brain down to my abdomen and drains out the spinal fluid. Um, most people, they keep their spinal fluid for the rest, for most of their life. They don't really replenish it, maybe about every seven years. Um, I replenish my spinal fluid every two days. And the way I replenish it is by drinking water, taking a shower, washing dishes, anything that will absorb the, the moisture in. So, um, that means that I'm replacing my spinal fluid every two days with water. So whatever I'm drinking is what I get. Unfortunately, when chlorinated water and especially with the chloramine in particular, but also with chlorine, um, when it goes in, it gets into my spinal system, which then of course the spinal fluid goes around the head. And so what it does is it etches. So it's like, uh, if you can imagine this, sticking your hand in kind of a bleach, that burn, that is exactly what I have inside my brain 24 hours a day from the water. So since 2018, I've been suffering from it. We've gotten water filtration systems. We've gotten, uh, to give you an idea, I've spent over five and a half thousand dollars this last year on water and water filtration systems. Because the water filters themselves saturate within 10 weeks. So you have to replace them completely. So, um, the latest one I've got is to add a, um, a coconut based graphite carbon filter that I can individually replace myself. We're hoping that that will stretch the main tower that I've got, which is a 70 litre tower, uh, water tower, or 50 litres, our water tower, uh, cycles through the water all the time. But that one I was having to replace every six weeks, uh, and that costs $600 every time I was replacing it every six weeks. So the biggest problem we've got is that, for example, in Christchurch, one of the things I originally went to the council and why they were willing to get rid of it is because the Christchurch water system is not oriented for, it was never built or intended to be designed for chlorination. Chlorination requires churn units to be able to cycle the water through. Otherwise you can get some areas that have concentrations. And so the, cause chlorine and chloramine are, the chloramine is roughly the same density as water. It's just slightly heavier. You can get concentrations. This area concentration.
James, can I just pause you for a minute there?
Yes.
I'm just struggling to see the relevance of what you're talking about to, um, our annual plan. Because this is a, this is what you're talking about is Christchurch City Council, uh, chlorination of water. And, and we are the regional council, so we don't, we don't do that. So I, I guess if you could just link this into how, how this links with your submission, which wasn't about chlorination of water.
Um, oh, sorry. That was a submission. I thought this was, this was, cause I have a meeting about that. So I wasn't sure. I'm sorry. Apologise.
Yeah.
One thing for the chlor, so the one thing for the coun, for the council side of it is, or for the environment side is that our water runoff system, um, is not currently being tested for chlorine or chloramine as it affects the other areas of the environment. So as it affects me, it affects everything we eat. For example, uh, your chicken, if you get chicken, almost unless you get it from Bostock, which is the only place providing it here in New Zealand that has chlorine free chicken. Um, so the amount of chlorination you get from chicken is a huge amount of volume of it. And it's because of the water that people get. If you go to a restaurant anywhere here, it doesn't matter in the county or whatever, your, your water that you're getting is fully chlorinated. And so that water, whether it's, and you're, you're feeding the animals that you're feeding the grounds and the gravel that you're feeding. Anytime you're watering is where you're having the problems on the chlorination. So, um, you, you're, you're chlorinating, doesn't just affect, we as humans can communicate, but it's affecting our animals. It's affecting our livestock. It's affecting the grounds. It's affecting our vegetables. So the chlorination that happens in the city is a runoff into the rest of the environment. And what we need, and one thing is when I talked originally to the, uh, to the environment, uh, committee earlier was that they don't actually currently even monitor what's going on in the water for that. You look for nitrates and sulfates, but you're not looking at the chlorine at all, nor the chloramine. And those have tremendous effects on it. So, sorry, sorry if I wasn't in the roundabout way. It's, it's, the fact is that right now there is no requirements within the Canterbury environment to actually monitor chlorine or chloramine levels. And these have tremendous effects on wildlife as well as what we eat and consume from it. So the ripple effect is massive because it enters into our food system. And if I'm, I'm the canary in the coal mine, it affects me because I have a very, but it affects the intestines. So the one thing is with chlorine, what they're saying, and this is a valid argument, they say it kills the bad bacteria. Okay. Fair point. Unfortunately, they don't tell you, it kills all bacteria. So it doesn't know the difference between good and bad bacteria. It kills all your bacteria. And we already know that in our gut, bacteria is very, very important to keep our, our biome and our gut going. So.
James, you've just got, um, two minutes left. And I noticed in your submission, you mentioned bus fares and you mentioned, um, flood mitigation and seawalls. In your last two minutes, did you want to say anything about those? Cause those are things we can address.
Okay. So the, the flood mitigation, I think that what we need to do is, I, I do believe that, um, it's not going to get any better. We do need to increase the rates to be able to handle it. Um, Christchurch itself, if you look at the, the, where the temple, the tower used to be, was below sea level or just above sea level. We are, we are lower, we're 1.5 metres even lower near the ocean than we were before. So as rising sea levels go, we're going to have a real problem, especially in the agricultural area. Right now, the Canterbury Plains, out of my understanding, still feeds 400 million people around the world. If that were to get flooded, uh, this would be an environmental, at a food shortage crisis on the world, similar to the crisis that we're currently facing from the Ukraine being invaded. So we produce the same amount of food that all of Ukraine does or was before the war. You can imagine what that food impact or shortage will be. It's, it's may be a burden on us, but no one else in the world is going to be looking to try and solve this until it's too much of a problem. So I think from that point of view, flooding has to be done with. As far as the bus fare thing, I think that we, we literally, uh, if we're going to get our hold on the greenhouse gases, we really need to try and encourage people to take buses more. And the ability for them, we need to have a certain amount of pay because if you don't, you will get, we tried it in, in Germany. And when we had free bus fare, it got vandalised. Um, if there was at least a little bit of money in the stake of it, they, and they had to put some, you didn't get the riffraff that were running on it. You had literally people saying, well, I'm paying for it anyhow, I'm using it. So they're not using it to abuse, they're using it to, so I don't think we need to go to the extreme making it free for all. But I think we definitely need to subsidise it to try and encourage people to, uh, not see as a financial hardship. Because they'll go, oh, I don't have the spare change or, oh, I didn't top up my car, therefore I'll just take my car. We want to get rid of the excuse of people using the vehicles. So, sorry. Hopefully that's it. Oh, can't hear you. You've got your audio, your mute.
I was just saying, I think there's a question or two for you.
Okay.
Um, can I just check before we take Lance's question? Megan, do you have a question for this or do you have your hand up from something else? I'm not sure if Megan's actually there. All right. We'll take Lance's question.
Kiara, thanks for your submission, James. Um, just a question of clarification from me. Um, with you pointing out really clearly the concerns about chlorine and chloramine and testing for that. Are you specifically just talking about drinking water in that sense? Cause elsewhere in your submission, you mentioned like pesticides and fertilisers and that kind of thing. Um, should we interpret that as sort of, um, su, support for broader, um, testing of emerging contaminants? Or are you more focused on that drinking water aspect?
Oh, it, it's actually for all the contaminant. I mean, chlorine actually goes in various areas. It's not just, like I said, it's part of the runoff in ways. It doesn't just magically vaporise itself the moment people stop drinking it. It doesn't go from leaving your house to, oh, now there's no more chlorine. The chlorine goes through the entire water system. And so every one of our cities is contributing in the runoff of our water. If you wash your car, whatever else, it's got chlorine in. We're taking it right down the system. It runs to the rest of the system from the, from the, from whichever city we're in throughout the whole, uh, Canterbury region. Every single town where there's water chlorination, every single town is now the water, where does it go? It doesn't just magically vanish. It goes through the systems and we really need to make sure that we are, that we're including. Uh, because right now, up until now, there is, they test for nitrates, they test for sulfates. They're not testing for chlorine and that is a bigger impact on our guts than, I mean, nitrogen does have a problem and we did have the Havelock incident because of the oversaturation of the nitrates. A lot of breeding ground for that, for some of the, uh, bacteria to go in there that really caused a big problem. Um, but our, our, we have a problem with chlorine. And right now Canterbury environment, when I talked to, said, yeah, we, we don't test for it because we've never had a, a call to. I'm like, well, can I make the call?
Thank, thanks for that clarification.
All right. It doesn't look like there's any other, um, questions on this. Um, so thank you very much, James.
You bet.
Um, James's submission is on the papers. So, so do have a read of it. And an interesting, an interesting submission, something to think about for the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So our next submitter. Um, I'll just find the, the run sheet. Um, now can I just check, Petraia, is Ross Holston here or are we going to take Edward next?
We have Ross. He's sitting at the end of the table.
Oh, great. Okay. Um, all right. Off you go, Ross.
Yeah. My name's Ross Holston, Research Submissions Officer of the Greater Hornby Residence. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. We appreciate the proactive starts taken by ECAN on a number of issues concerning our community. Firstly, transport. Myself and Mike Moore, our community board chair, spoke with Megan Woods about converting T-Wise Power to rail at the end of their tenure. This could be done easily from Ascot Substation or thereabouts. The thought was that if the main line was electrified, charging stations could also be established at outlets along the rail line from Invacables Picton. Freight should then be prioritised by rail to centres for distribution by truck. Modern passenger trains complete with wifi modern conveniences, including space for a carriage to freight push bikes. Among other, freight should be included. commuter rail should also be available where appropriate. Kyle Park in Hornby could be a sta, a station as we're in an industrial location, which takes a lot of passengers. Megan informed us that it'd be saved on the power for data banks. Buses, as mentioned, GHRA ran a survey on this. The majority chose the second option. I actually have the list of, uh, stuff here which I'll leave behind. Also mentioned residents from Hornby having a number of instances, typically using buses to reach hospital destinations. This can be very hard for people in wheelchairs, et cetera. It's also been mentioned that a further route could include a connection between Hornby, Wigan, Horswell and possibly Prellington. As there is no connection here and many residents from with this encampment use the hub mall for shopping. We wonder if a feasibility study could be done on this. Flooding, much of the flooding that is now occurring is also related to climate change. And it's only set to get worse. When you can build stop banks to contain stormwater, this is not always successful. But must be used as one method to contain the floodwater. I myself have been through two significant floods and have seen water coming up through the ground where it looked like a pot of boiling porridge. A very dangerous situation should someone be in the location. That actually occurred on the showgrounds at Valkuta in 1957. Climate change, this is upon us and will only get worse. There was a proposal to build dam on the Waimaka Riri in the 1920s. However, this never came to fruition as was disclosed. But even though this dam will be 50 foot high, it'll be full of aggregate within five years. That is how much aggregate comes down in this catchment and the riverbed is rising. As temperatures rise and the snow melts, this aggregate content will increase. And once the snow melts with the increased weather pattern on these steep slopes, we will experience increased slip, increased slips and avalanches, which will inevitably end up in the rivers. It's time for the Braided Rivers Action Group to consider all the issues, including climate change. And to take action to progressively lower the river beds in a systematic and environmental manner. While still allowing breeding sites for birds and retaining the braided rivers. This can be done by redirecting quarry operations away from productive land and into the rivers under supervision. Do not be put off with your be interfering with natural environment agreement. This happened when irrigation was introduced and water levels were lower, altering the water, uh, the river flows. For those who few have never seen COVID, oh, never saw COVID in years ago in North Canterbury before the Merri water scheme was built. This was a very barren ground, capable of very low sheet numbers. Today it is fertile and productive. Today it is fertile and productive. The downside, if there is one, is that the water table rose that much that when Mokap Motors went to replace their fuel tanks in the 1990s, they had to weigh them down with power poles to sink them below water level. The same will probably happen when Central Plains water comes on, fully comes on, that is, and perhaps we'll start seeing quarries flooded. If the salmon was used to supply aggregate in surrounding areas, perhaps we may see it flying again, enabling wetlands to be built, eels and trout to thrive and breed once again in this location. The Ashburton River flood should have taught us, if anything, to work with nature and to use to our benefit as much as possible. So while using stock banks also shift aggregate production to rivers where replenishment is naturally renewable, and stop destroying productive land for one-off use. After all, central government has stated it wants to retain as much LUC1, 2, 3 land as is possible for agriculture. The latest trend in housing announced will see housing intensified, but will also see hundreds of hectares of valuable land lost to quarries under the current local government policy. One has to ask, which is worse? It will be too late to prepare for water river remediation after the Alpine Fault. Let's go. The work needs to start now, not later, to address the effects that are coming. Remember, it is a matter of when, not if this will happen. No local councils have dust monitoring equipment, and they rely solely on the honesty of the quarry oligarchs, which is highly questionable, given that many of them do not have monitors, and those that do place them in outer way places where they are little to no value. Section 23 of the Health Act clearly places responsibility on councils to ensure the wellbeing of their residents and not the quarries. This is not being done, with residents suffering from ill health, while New Zealand ranks in the lowest 30 countries in the world when it comes to air quality, with even the likes of India having one comorbid setback from quarries. In conclusion, keep up the good work. We do believe you're on the right track and are watching with interesting anticipation. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ross, for that excellent submission. There's a lot of very wise and considered information in there. Are there any questions from councillors on the submission? I hope everyone's read it carefully. Okay, I'm not seeing any questions. Oh, well, never mind. All right. Actually, I did have one question. And that's around the reliance on industry self-monitoring. So, Ross, would you like to see more funds put towards independent monitoring or ECAN doing the monitoring, rather than us have industry do their own monitoring? Is that what you would prefer?
It definitely needs to be monitored by both councils. The Christchurch City Council is responsible for the dust coming off the roads. If you go out to Roberts Road, when Fulton Hogan are carting gravel open down there, frequently you can see it's very, very thick with dust. The trucks are uncovered when they should be covered. And let's face it, below PM 20, you cannot see that dust. And it's PM 10 that gets into the fluorex, PM 2.5 and 4 gets into your lungs. PM 1 can actually cause dementia, and has been recorded as causing dementia in America. These facts are well known. We have been in touch with the Ministry of Environment, checking on dust monitors. All the dust monitors that are listed as approved in Australia and America are approved basically for use in New Zealand. We've actually been offered equipment from the North Island, but we haven't accepted it as yet. They come down here and use ourselves independently. Something just has to be done. I know Yahan's has been working on monitors. And, you know, that's really appreciated. We just need to do something. We've found a ranger, a wee handheld unit, that has different heads that does simple different types of chemicals, as well as PM dust, and it gives real-time measurements. It will measure it immediately. Those heads are calibrated every year. So, you know, we can get this gear. We can get it ourselves.
Very helpful. Thank you very much, Ross. And well, I see we've got our next two submitters have joined the meeting. So we will need to move to the next submitters. So can I just check, are we having, it looks like we're going to have Regan first and then Edward? Edward, is it all right if Regan goes first and then you, or do you have to leave early?
Yep, that's all right. Can you hear me properly here?
Yeah, you're a little bit quiet, but I can just hear you. All right. So, Regan, could you turn your camera on, please? Yes.
So thank you all for being here in our virtual fire today. My name is Regan. I'm of Ngaitarangi, English descent, and I live in Ohi Neho in Littleton. And really appreciate the opportunity to have a brief corridor with you all, and also want to acknowledge the huge amounts of mahi that you do behind the scenes. So in terms of my background, I'm a real Maori teacher and translator and co-chair advisor, and also an English and maths teacher. And I've been working in Aotearoa in this kind of space for 10 years. I've grown up here as well. So I just had a few kind of points that I wanted to, I guess, raise. And then I've got a wayata to support them as well. But just kind of briefly, the main thing I wanted to talk about was in relation to your bus fares and public transport proposals. And I just wanted to firstly totoku your suggestion of the two-year reduced or free fare. I think that's fantastic. For a long time, I've been hoping that the conversation would move, and it's really great that we're talking about free fares now. I think that's fantastic. We kind of move into a downward spiral if we have fares that are prohibitive for many people, especially lower socioeconomic households, and then bus numbers plummet, and then those numbers kind of justify the low investment that we put into public transport. So I think it's really bold what you're doing with the proposed two-year fare reduction or free fares, and I hope that you go further with that. I'd love to eventually see free fares for all in Aotearoa. And it'd be great if that could be worked in with, you know, central government, with things like increasing motor vehicle registration levies and things like that, so that we're actually forced out of our cars. Because as we know with these things, sometimes we need economic encouragement to make those changes. So thank you for doing all of your work in that space. As well as that, so I'd love to see you going further, and I hope that this is trialed and is successful. In terms of your other co-power, particularly in regards to the taya, the finua ngaitarangi, ngawa. I know you obviously already worked with Manu Finua with Ngaitahu, but we'd love to see that strengthened and continued. And in regards to that sort of work, just want to emphasize the, yeah, as you all know, the urgency. I have a two-and-a-half-year-old son and another on the way, and I really think we need to to make steps now that we should have been doing for the last 30 years, but please continue to be bold in that space as well. And lastly, just wanted to also mention that being in Littleton, there's corridor around here about improving cycling options. It would be great. I know that there's some corridor about a free fare if you put your bike on the bus to go through the tunnel. It'd be great to see those sorts of things trialled. Just want to totoku that. I'm looking forward to the bike option going through the tunnel. I know that it's not your space, but given that it was first rail and then cars, I think bikes is the important mode of transport that we have in this current century. So I look forward to that eventually happening as well. So that's all I want to say. I'll just finish with the wayata, but I just wanted to support what you're all doing. And here's a little wayata that I wrote with a friend a few years ago when Bob Parker was in office. It's called "Go to Bus Stop". Bob Parker is city planning, light rail that is city spanning. So why am I still waiting here? Urban transport, a nightmare! Go to bus stop, wait for bus. Go to bus stop, wait for bus. Why would buses wait for us? Why would buses wait for us? Lee Endelville will move to city, sell her car, on trade me. She can show her MetroCard, but changing system very hard. Thank you, Dan. Go to bus stop, wait for bus. Go to bus stop, wait for bus. Why would buses wait for us? Why would buses wait for us? John Minto signs yell free buses, but what no one will discuss is that bus hail is quite progressive. The yard is not too oppressive, plus a bus per person costs too much and garages are not long enough. Dog Car gives a free bus fare, but just for those with silver hair, please send one Winston immediately. I just turned six, type, believe you me. Wait till you see my fake ID. Free bus rides is good policy. We all ride bus for free, free, free. Sorry, waka, go our way. My carpander's lonely day in a garage full of fluff and ignored by unfriendly stuff. Soon car outside, sleeping rough. Life or car gets tough, tough, tough. Go to bus stop, wait for bus. Go to bus stop, wait for bus. Why would buses wait for us? Why would buses wait for us? In this city I want to live, humans take and buses give. Buses pay a human fare to ride us humans everywhere. Buses wait at human stops to human to suburban shops. In this future, we will see buses pay and humans free. Plus living, thriving CBD. Go to bus stop, wait for bus. Go to bus stop, wait for bus. Why would buses wait for us? Buses are up here to gas.
Thank you, Regan. That's got to be the most original annual plan submission that I've heard in my life.
I play, that song's almost 10 years old, so I thought, you know, I have to dust it off. It's great. Thank you. Also appreciate, having gone through the lockdown as a high school teacher, Zoom and Teams can be tough, so I thought hopefully that's something different.
All right. There's a question for you from councillor Lan Farm.
Thank you, Regan. Thanks so much for that. That's excellent. My question is just around your comments about, you know, us going sort of as far as possible with the decision-making that's available to us. And some submitters have interpreted that in terms of the two options for free fares for a limited group of people or flat fares for everyone, as sort of combining the two options. Do you have any comments around that? Because I note that you mentioned, you know, how people, you know, there are low-income people struggling. Do you think adding the two on top of each other would be too much of a rates burden, and therefore maybe one option is the better starting point? Or do you think, would you like to see us, say, go for gold and go for the two options?
Oh, kapai. Yeah, great question. So I guess firstly, it's worth pointing out that, so I am a rate payer. I know it's very easy to kind of, you know, you might get some people saying, yeah, you know, go 100% because, you know, and that won't necessarily have consequences for me. So I'm very aware that, you know, these things have a cost. And as a rate payer, I would absolutely say, go for gold. If you can combine the two, that's even better. My preference would be if we can make this trial work and it raises patronage, it has to be, you know, done in a proper way and fully funded and advertised and all that sort of thing. So kind of go for gold, as you say, combined with a flat rate reduction. I think that would be much better. I think we really have to be aiming for free fares for everybody, eventually, not necessarily right now. But anything that takes us closer to that is great. My only thing that I'd say there, as well as supporting that, is that we have to support the infrastructure as well. So having grown up in Aotearoa, the bus was something that I rode as a teenager to go to the movies. And then the moment that I started biking around, essentially it stopped, and it was biking or driving. It's great that we've got such great cycle infrastructure. But, you know, my wahine is from Wellington. We actually have just been in Wellington for the last two weeks, and it's staggering the difference in Wellington. And the difference there is that in Wellington, to get into the city, it's ridiculous to take a car. There's no parks. You can't expect to get a park in Wellington, and the cost is extremely prohibitive. So you get all people, you know, rich and poor and everyone in between riding the bus. In Aotearoa, everybody has a garage, everybody has a car, and that's one of the major issues that we have. So I'd love to see, as well as, if I had to choose, if you had to go free fares, free target free fares and reduced fares, that's great. But the other half that is so important is making sure the buses are reliable, that there's more of them, that if I want to go to work in the city, I know that I can walk out my door and the bus will arrive at that time. And that's the other reason why people don't take the bus, because it's unreliable. And so if we don't have the targeted free fares alongside better infrastructure, you know, better timetables, the sort of thing that you see in Europe and Japan, those sorts of countries, then we're kind of setting it up to fail. So, yeah, if I had to pick between, that's kind of the most important thing, is it next to it, the more buses, more regalia buses. And I'd probably pick that over the reduced rate for others. But if you can do all three, that's great. Yeah, and I'm the proud son of a bus driver, a Christchurch bus driver back in the day. So, yeah, I hope that makes kind of sense. Thanks for your question.
Thanks, Regan. So in the interest of time, we should move probably to the next submitter. So I think we'll take Edward now, because he's been waiting for quite a while. And then after Edward, we will have Roman. So Edward, are you ready to do your submission?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm holding the mic really close so I can properly hear it. I really like what Regan had to say. I'm basically just going to be like parroting the same things that Regan said. So basically just saying, like, I'm not, I don't have any specific knowledge or anything like that. I'm just sort of a young person that wants to use the city in the best way. Like, I need a vehicle at the moment to be able to do what I want to do in the city. And I want a future where I kind of don't need a vehicle to get around. There's plenty of examples around the world where it works. As Regan said, you guys have been doing heaps of good work, and especially with the cycle infrastructure, the last little while has even been proven. I've been really gathering that. But, yeah, we need the sort of the cycle infrastructure, and then we need the the infrastructure at the sort of city level to sort of connect things up there. And hopefully at national levels, there'll be more intercity infrastructure. infrastructure, but transport happening as well. Um, yeah, I just really want to be able to see some future where we can do all the things we want to do. Um, but we don't need to have a car or sacrifice sort of how we're impacting the world uh in that way. Um. Yeah, the the public transport stuff definitely has more of an impact on lower socioeconomic people. Um. So the any situation where we can sort of improve public transport is going to be helping those people. There are always going to be people that are going to have the most impact from climate changes. Um. Anything else? Uh, yeah, when people consider move around the city more, we sort of see more community and economic activity sort of appear in those areas. Uh, it is like one whole sort of feedback system where as we sort of get more people to get into it, as we get more sort of public support, then you get more people excited behind it, more infrastructure appearing around it in like the uh private sector as well. Um. I would really love to see a future where it's like free and we can sort of make every opportunity to make it the the uh the rational option for people, make it just like the easy option to get on a vehicle. Like cars can maybe be backup choice for people who have um accessibility problems or I mean, if they really want to drive fast or whatever, they can do that. But I'd love for every other situation for it just makes sense to use public transport. And not there yet. Um. Everything that sort of Regan said about um sort of having reliable transport and making things hard. But for having a car, like I'm totally behind sort of thinking of the psychology of it and trying to, you know, put out all the tricks in the book to be able to sort of encourage us to do the right things. Um, because we are, you know, we do just act off what what we want to do in our feelings and so on. If if we can make an environment that results in us doing the right things, then that's like an all in. Um. But yeah, Christchurch is a wide area. People need to get around. Um, and we want a way to get around that. That's with what we want to do and aligns with uh what we understand about how to minimize our environmental impact. Um, I'm probably just one of many voices that have been saying this thing to you guys, but um, yeah, just adding to the caucus of of what we believe and hopefully we're we'll get to that place in the future. And I appreciate the work you guys are doing. That's pretty much it.
Great. Thank you, Edward. Um, there's a couple of questions for you if you don't mind taking. So I think Chair Huey, you had the first question for Edward.
Oh, thank you very much, Edward, for coming in and making a submission. It's great to hear from you. I'm interested to um know and and your friends, how widespread your view is. Would you say that's what most of your friends think? And how how widespread would it be about public transport?
Um, I'd say that a lot of us see how it works in other countries like Japan or in Europe. And that way of doing things is very attractive to us. Um, like some of us, my friends will go overseas and they'll experience that kind of way of doing things and then come back to Christchurch and sort of like be a bit annoyed that they can't sort of uh live in the same way that they were living before. Um. It's I mean, everyone sees how that is the the sort of best option for doing things that we do need to decrease our carbon emissions. People don't want to use public transport at the moment. But it's because it's it's annoying and it's there's better options. And yeah, it's just the inconvenience of it sort of makes us not want to do it. Like, I I'd really like to not be using uh a vehicle. If sort of everything lined up nicely and I could get around the city well. Um. Um, yeah, I mean, all my friends can afford it. Yeah, I think it's just a matter of just sort of bringing down as many barriers as possible whenever there's a way for us to to make it the um intuitive choice, then that should be uh that's sort of the right direction to be going in.
Thanks for your thoughts. All right. So the next question is from councillor Ian McKenzie.
Uh, thanks, Edward, for your submission. Um, and I may have taken you out of context, but it sounded to me like you sort of want everything, but uh, which I can understand. I want everything too. Uh, but you weren't necessarily, I was just interested to know what sacrifices with your own lifestyle you're prepared to make to help deliver some of those things you want. Do you live next to your place of work or study? Or, you know, um, what are the things you're doing? Uh, or is that, or is the concept that actually we should be providing infrastructure to allow you to do it? And 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 as individuals, you just um demand more, which is an abrasive way of uh saying just said, yeah.
Yeah, no, I like your um, I like your brazenness with asking that. Very good. Um, yeah, I mean, I've got my bike, so I like to bike around a bit. I do live closer to my area of work now. I'm hoping to get a spot that's closer. Um, but I'm still about 20 minute bike away from my place of residence. Um. I've got like hardware that I move between places. So that's not, that's not great uh for having to use a vehicle around. I only came back to Christchurch a few months ago. So I guess my excuse that I'm still like figuring out the system again and trying to understand again how to get around. Um. I would like to sort of figure out the bus routes from my new flat that I've moved into just recently and my place of business. So over the winter I can choose that more. Um, what other other things am I doing?
I mean, do do, but where does planning and and sort of uh um better better organized city development fit into your views about the future?
Yeah, um. I mean, yeah, I'm definitely just presenting sort of the best case. I'm presenting sort of my my idealized view of the world. And I definitely see that the reality is that we've got to make hard decisions about things sometimes. Um, and this, the situation that we're in calls for a lot of hard decisions where everything's got a negative result. Um. But yeah, it's it's just sort of the the, as long as we have the sort of this momentum going in the right direction, then definitely it feels good to to have, like well saying about the cycle infrastructure happened before. When I see things happening at a uh government's level, it does give me more hope as an individual for making changes in my own life as well. I feel like there is a sort of a bounce, like a feedback effect where there are changes, I'm making it higher up and changes happening at the individual level and they sort of bounce off each other and sort of help we encourage each other to move along forwards. I don't know if that sort of gives you some answer to your questions?
Yeah, no, thanks.
Right. We're going to have to wrap up the questions now because we're starting to eat into the next submitter's time. So thank you very much for your submission and answering our questions, Edward.
Cool. Thanks, guys. Good luck with everything in the future.
So now our next uh submitter is Roman Schmuckov. And um if you look on page 134 of your addenda, um that's where the uh submission is. So um, Roman, over to you.
Uh, Tenakato. Um, thank you. Can you guys hear me? Yep, great. Um, I'm Roman and I've come here to speak on Generation Zero's submission uh for the plan. Uh, so Generation Zero, if you haven't heard of us before, uh, we're a youth-led climate change uh action organization mobilizing New Zealanders to engage with decision-making and campaigns for intergenerational climate justice. So thank you for inviting us to speak on the plan. Um. As an organization that created and campaigned for the Zero Carbon Act, it's great to see that ECAN has proposed bold steps in the annual plan to take action and to address the climate crisis we're facing. And it's a real one, like the effects on our communities, we're seeing it all the time with the weather and so on. So yeah, it's important that with these actions, we make sure that our most vulnerable and low-income communities are supported, make sure these actions make better, not worse. Um, so I like to begin by thanking the ECAN staff because they created quite an informative and illustrative webpage for the annual plan. Um, and I think it shows really well how the proposed annual plan will work and how it affects people. Um, and it's also a very simple and easy to use submission page. So we applaud your efforts to make it easier for people to be involved in local decision-making. All right. Um, so Generation Zero strongly supports option one for the public transport they're proposing. Um, so transport is Christchurch's biggest source of emissions and we have insane amounts of cars in sea, especially for the size of our city. I'd say in the whole world, we're quite high up there. Um. By providing free fares, public transport, we can provide a suitable alternative to private vehicles that can compete on costs and convenience. Uh, this is especially relevant now as we are facing a global oil shock that has seen fuel prices soar in New Zealand. Um, fortunately, the temporary government subsidy on fares have made public transport a competitive option um for travellers and metro bus operators are constantly expanding their electric bus fleets as well, which is dampening the effect on fuel prices on public transport, reducing fossil fuel reliance. By increasing our share of mode of transport towards buses and other public transport modes in my car future, we can reduce our emissions and reduce vehicular traffic on the road. Uh, this has many other effects, uh such as making it easier, safer for cyclists, pedestrians, and also reducing road maintenance due to wear and tear of traffic. Free fare, public transport will also help create a Christchurch fair and flexible region. Um, so the target points of the proposed fare uh travel allow vulnerable communities in those low and to exit public transport to get to work, school, travel, um access services like healthcare, see family and friends.
Um. Roman, can I just pause you for a second?
Yep.
Um, you just seem to be going in between two microphones. Um, so you sound is sort of going in and out. So I don't know if you can get a bit closer to whichever microphone you're using, whether it's in your computer or somewhere else. Thanks.
Hold on.
Uh, can't hear you now.
That's all right?
Yep, it's good.
Is it double? Two microphones? Oh.
It's all right. Just carry on.
Yeah, yeah. Um. Yeah. Uh, using a private car has become increasingly costly, especially for those on low income in the past month. As shown in ECAN's own analysis. Um, households with families and students disabled, job seekers are projected to save thousands of dollars if they take public yellow basis. Which makes up for whatever rates increase they might have to pay, which is often measly in comparison, even for those who might not take public transport often. Saving from occasional usage such as a trip to town or the day night for fun leisurely trip, family on the weekend will make up for the increased rate. And in as well, there's other benefits to society. Give me a second.
Is this better? Yeah.
Yeah, that's a lot better.
Okay. Um, is it still doubling up?
No, that problem's still in the way now.
All right. Um. And so we need to do more. Um, so firstly, Generation Zero employs environment can be to amend the proposal and expand free fares to include to support people of total mobility cardholders. Um, it is important to allow as many total mobility cardholders um to take advantage of free the freedom and benefits from free fares. Um, and we should be allowing people to come with them and take the bus for free. Second, we need to expand cheap fares for everyone. We would like to see option two implemented alongside option one. We need to maximize benefits of free fares with cheapest fares, flat fares. Flat fares would encourage more long-distance commuters from surrounding satellite towns such as Kaipara, Rangor, Ralston, Lincoln, et cetera, to take the bus, especially the express services that Metro has. Um, those vote pretty fast um compared to normal buses. So would like to see more people using them. Um, obviously this would increase rates a little bit more, but there is currently an appetite for cheap public transport fares right now. Um, especially since the introduction of the government's half price subsidy on stairs. As you are representatives of our region and home to one of the biggest cities in the country, I think you guys can make a solid case in the current political situation to continue subsidizing public transport as a cheaper fare than before. Finally, Generation Zero is strongly in support of the climate change levy. And this levy will be useful when quickly providing boosting projects um and initiatives in the region to aid climate adaptivity resilience. Um, and it is important the fund focuses on both recovery and incentive measures. We'd like the scope of the fund from the levy to remain wide, to allow flexibility and innovation and the solutions to the problems we face. Uh, thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we're just going to have one question. Um, for Roman, if anyone has a question, we're running a bit behind time. Yeah. Uh, councillor Southworth.
Good. Thank you, Roman. Apologies if I missed in the discussions around the sound. Um, I was interested, you mentioned about encouraging transit-oriented development in your submission, and I just wondered what you meant exactly by that.
All right, understandable. Um, so by transit-oriented development, we mean um essentially getting more like denser housing around public transport routes. So like recently, Christ City Council, they put up a plan. They want to increase the height limits along Ricketon, which is one of the big RTR routes through Christchurch and other areas like Ease Gate, Papunui. So it's all a matter of building houses near public transport so people don't have to drive a long distance um from like a suburb far out um to work. They can take public transport. And yeah, is there anything else?
No, that was good. I I thought that's probably what you meant by that, but I just, it's not a phrase that I'm familiar with. So I just thought I doubled that. We were thinking about the same thing. So that's great. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Roman. Um, your submission and um we will move on to the next person. And I'm not quite clear if that's Marie Burnett or whether it's actually Kate White. Um, staff, can you just confirm for me? Um. Who the next person is, it's
I can probably help you.
Kate from the Banks Peninsula Conservation Trust. Okay, great. Off you go.
Okay, um, Kira Kouta, na mihinui o teneira, koupini karnabi toku ingoa. Um, I'm the chair of the Banks Peninsula Conservation Trust. And with me is Kate White, who's um an ecologist and long-term trustee uh of of the Banks Peninsula Conservation Trust. Um, what uh what I thought I'd do is is to work through our submission, but but um and just some of the key points. Um, but uh, I suppose the first thing is to say that um, and and we do want to put this on record, just how grateful we are uh to ECAN for for the uh support of the trust over many years and particularly in relation to the um piss-free Banks Peninsula strategy. Uh, it really is an outstanding project and also your support um for a lot of the activities to the trust, uh and in particular today's context, the covenanting uh program of the trust. It it might help if I just put it into a bit of context. Um, this uh, this This submission actually sort of had its genesis last year in the LTP planning process. And from that, we were invited to put our thoughts about bulk funding for the covenanting projects of the trust in a letter to the CEO, to Stephanie. And in very broad terms, I'll go through aspects of that letter in a minute. But really what we're asking for is an annual grant of $50,000. We discussed that in the LTP last year. You know, there's a perception that the trust might be well funded. It is not. We are doing a huge amount, particularly in bringing together large scale collaborations, sometimes 18, up to 20 organisations. And it really is an incredibly effective way of utilizing scarce resources. But it's a huge load, administrative load on the trust. So that annual operations grant of $50,000 would be really appreciated. We also, and most importantly, we've been really grateful to ECAN for supporting the covenanting work of the trust. In fact, over the years, you really haven't turned us down on any applications. But we really think that we could get the thrust of our paper is that we think there'd be a lot more efficiency. We'd be able to be far more strategic if we had an annual sort of bulk funding. At the moment, we're coming to you on every single application. And it means that we can't actually be efficient in terms of, you know, bulk purchasing for fencing materials or strategic and joining up covenants in a catchment basis. So that's a very important request, I guess, for you to consider. And we're also asking you to continue to support the Pest Free Banks Peninsula Programme. Then you'll be able to, I'm sure you update the councillors regularly on that Pest Free Banks Peninsula Programme. But, you know, we should be so excited about it. It is extraordinary what that team is doing and it wouldn't happen without the support of ECAN. And we're also asking for consideration to support a BPCT Farm Biodiversity Climate Resilient Advisory Service. So while the thrust of our request this year is around that support for covenanting, I think the really important thing to say to you is that it's not just Banks Peninsula that benefits. You know, the more we can enhance biodiversity, you'll see in our submission that we've got letters from Dr David Norton, the wonderful and unique Dr Hugh Wilson, who's written, you know, saying, you know, if any biodiversity and the unique systems, the ecosystems of ecology of Banks Peninsula, it benefits the whole of Canterbury. And a few weeks ago, some of us were lucky enough to be at the launch of Tekahu Kahukura, which is a collaboration on the Southern Port Hills, both sides of the Southern Port Hills. And importantly, one of the people who were the signatures of the MOU is the Selwyn District Council. They know that all of the biodiversity work that we do on Banks Peninsula benefits the plains. And also it's very much part of the, we've often described the biodiversity on Banks Peninsula as being the lungs of the city of Christchurch. Because, you know, we're in terms of carbon sequestration, you know, there's an amazing contribution, I believe, to the whole issue around climate change and the sequestration of carbon. So my sense is, to summarise just broadly before I take your questions, we're really seeing landowners on Banks Peninsula, you know, landscape scale projects, the Wild Side, Tekahu Kahukura. And the more the covenants can connect and join those corridors of biodiversity, the more we're going to see all of the outcomes. And if you combine that with Pest Free Banks Peninsula, the weed control, all of the education programmes run by the trust, which we're more than willing to share with people of Canterbury in terms of, you know, working with landowners and all of the pest and weed control. I think if we can get more strategic about the working with the landowners on Banks Peninsula, I think we'll all benefit and particularly the biodiversity of Canterbury. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Penny. I'm afraid we're just going to do one question because we actually have the other people waiting for this session. So councillor Ian McKenzie.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Penny, thank you for your presentation. Great presentation. Clearly you and your team are playing a pivotal role in the coordination of biodiversity efforts on the peninsula. How much funding and how closely do you work with the Zone Committee? Because a lot of, in other Zone Committee areas, I know they're funding this coordinated role on an ongoing basis as the way of trying to implement the various sub regional plans. I was just wondering what that connection is between the Zone Committee and you guys.
Look, we do work closely with the Zone Committee. And in fact, we're going to do a presentation to them soon. I think one of the things we're worrying about at the moment, and we're actually concerned about the changes to the biodiversity funding allocated in the most recent LTP. I think quite a bit of the money is, I may not be reading this correctly, but the Zone Committees were largely the ones we worked with on supporting the covenant programmes of the trust. But that has changed. And I don't think, if we're reading it correctly, it is why we really would look to the bulk funding. Because my sense is that the focus of the Zone Committees is not as it was before. We used to go to the Zone Committee each time we had a covenant to be supported. So.
I can actually add to that because I work with the Covenants Committee as a liaison officer. A Covenants Officer works very closely with the QE2 Officer, Alice Webster, and the Zone Committee. When we're working through all our biodiversity requests for funding through the Zone Committee, that's how it's been running now for quite some time. And it's been very effective. QE2 can only do, I think it's a few, just a few covenants on Banks Peninsula. Whereas, as you know, Banks Peninsula Conservation Trust is the only regionally local trust organisation. And there's so much to be looked after and support the farmers and landowners to protect that the Trust, Banks Peninsula Conservation Trust, is able to bring a lot more weight to that. So the Zone Committees have been incredibly supportive to the trust. But the funding that's now being distributed through to ECAN, as Penny said, is significantly reduced. So that means that that programme of covenanting is, you know, that arm of funding isn't there anymore through that kind of pathway. And in actual fact, that bulk funding, you know, has been talked through for a while because of the amount of work that goes in every time you put a request into competitive funding. There's a lot of work that goes in from both sides to make this all work. But all the ecological assessment that goes into the covenant selection, because we do have to thin out and only do the best in order to make the most of the small amount of money that we can, you know. All the work that goes through that is a very thorough process. So, and that's worked through in the past with the Water Zone Committee as well as the community and ecological assessment and the whole programme. So by the time we get through to that funding process, it's just, it's another whole layer of bureaucracy on both sides that's sort of money taken up really. So that's where the bulk funding concept came from. And then the other side of it is just not having that funding available within the stream that normally would be through ECAN's water zone.
Thanks very much.
Hopefully that makes sense.
All right. Thank you very much, Penny and Kate. And I think we will now need to move on to the next submitter. Okay, all right. So Pam Richardson, if you could please present. Thank you.
Right. Look, I will just follow on from what the Banks Peninsula Conservation Trust. I'm not sure whether many of you will know me. I've been involved in work on Banks Peninsula. I'm a champion for the community and involved in a lot of projects over the years, including Zone Committees, Pest Liaison Groups, the list goes on. So I'll just quickly, it's not in my submission at all, but the Banks Peninsula Feral Goat Ariduation Process operation is underway now. Very successful operation, using the people with the right skills at the right time. So ECAN is part of that, funding it, some of it, plus the Department of Conservation, Christchurch City Council, Banks Peninsula Conservation Trust, landowners in the community. So this is the third year in a major programme, considerable funding being applied, being very successful. But I just wanted to say that ECAN has a role, has quite a major role in that they can actually follow up on the regional pest management plan in which we were able to get rules in that. And that requires the goats to be identified and behind an appropriate fence. And I couldn't believe it on Friday when I opened the Accra Mail and found that there was ad in By and By in Canterbury. So that's very much appreciated because we're just struggling with one landowner at the moment. Very appropriate to see it in the Accra Mail. Well done. So if I go to the submission. Look, I've really missed interaction with Environment Canterbury councillors. There has been very few opportunities. There was the online Zoom session that we had about the annual plan. It was amazing. I think there might have been 25 of us on it. Or a mix of people, Colin Murk, Philip Hume, there were a whole lot of people, great mix. And I think that you should be looking at doing more of those programmes, those Zoom sessions like that across a range of subjects. And it was an opportunity to see some of the councillors in action. And they were superb. The way they answered, the way they behaved, the way they knew what was in the annual plan. Really appreciated it. It was great. So just there about the storm, you know, we've had a storm event and I'm very aware also that Environment Canterbury has just stuffed up some extra funding for the covenants and the fencing and conservation work that's been done and that's being undertaken over there to repair the many hundreds of dollars of damage that was done over there. That storm plantings would never have prevented that. In fact, we saw heaps more damage that was done off areas that had indigenous vegetation. So nothing would have prevented that. But I wondered if we could look at and see what could we have done better? Could the streams been managed better? Could the fencing being taken away further from the streams? We're seeing a lot of information about stream plantings alongside rivers and should they be back further? You know, so whether there are some learnings around that. Yes. And then climate change, I don't want to see anybody duplicating any issues. I want to see City Council, Environment, Canterbury working together. And I think we need to be having a better understanding of what are the topics we're going to address going forward. So that's all I'll say. If anybody's got any questions.
Right. Are there any questions for Pam? Councillor Clearwater.
You are a pan.
Hello, Phil.
Wouldn't let any plan without hearing from you. It's lovely. Pam, I'm interested in some of the projects, especially where you were already talking about the need for education around the river, stream and river management and how in fact some farmers and other landowners might benefit from that. I just wondered, are there some groups, and you also referred to it needing to be coordinated? Absolutely agree. I just wondered if there's some groups who are already trying to work at that, who perhaps we should look at how we might support more. I don't know.
Well, I can't just think of anything. Well, yes, I can. Kokarata had a stream catchment that was planted up and was managed. In the first years of that, it was decimated. Peter Ramsden, precious man, was part of that process. And I remember going back and piling or stacking all the plants back upwards again. And they'd survived. But it's more about, you know, keeping the rubbish out of the stream, keeping the stream banks clear. The mouths of stream, making sure that there's no buildup of shingles. So they have got a good flow path out to the sea. Environment Canterbury look after the big groups, but the little groups. And of course, in rural environment, it is the urban catchments of Banks Peninsula that is very grey, understanding who's in control of what in those small streams and those catchments. In the city, it's quite clear, but on Banks Peninsula, it's not. So I haven't got any, I haven't got any clear ideas. But it is helpful.
Very helpful in terms of what needs to be done in that. Thank you, Ben.
All right. So the next question is from Chair Jenny Huey.
Oh, hi Pam. Lovely to see you. Good. I'm good. I hope you are too. I'm just really interested in the comment you made about the positive feedback about the online interactions we had with the annual plan. That's a bit of an experiment we're doing. So it's very good to hear you so positively responding. And I'm just wondering from your view, what would be a good one that you would like to do again shortly with us? What sort of conversation? Perhaps we could do the review with City Council around how we handled the last, the weather storm. Would that be something we could do online?
Yes, that is. But, you know, even biodiversity, you know, when we prepared the ECAN biodiversity strategy, look, there were a whole range of organisations. It was a huge interaction with the community. We don't have that now. And so looking for an innovative way, that may be. And, you know, it's an opportunity to share what is happening across the region with City Council and yourselves and what some of the science is telling us. We don't want to be portraying this as a terrible place, but I think we get more out of being positive about what we're doing and the good things that we can learn from each other and how we do it. Yeah. And I think that would be one. But yes, the storm one maybe, that would be an interesting one as well. Things on climate change, there are a whole lot of issues I believe you could actually be looking at.
Great. Thanks, Pam.
So there's a question from councillor Ed.
Hello, Steve.
Hi Pam.
How are you?
Thanks very much for your submission. It's really good. Just a question or just a thought from me. You mentioned catchment groups. It's a way forward in terms of the Banks Peninsula geography to look at hydrological catchments and, you know, ridge lines through to the valleys and assessing multiple bespoke solutions for each of those systems. Is that something that anyone's looking at over there at the moment in terms of your voluntary groups? Or does it need a bigger?
It's not, Steve. But look, the Zone Committee, that was what the idea was, that we would have catchment groups that we would spread out across the peninsula. And, you know, we started that, they started that with the, from the mountains to the sea in the Goffs Bay area and that, and the catchment over that side of the hill. So it was getting a template that worked and moved on around things. Covid has upset everything. It's just, you know, it's really shattered us all. So there hasn't been so much of a focus. But I believe that is the way we should be going. Because if you're working together to resolve one thing, you can do something else at the same time. You know, and we all probably do that a little bit as a community now. You know, for example, in Pidgin Bay, we're looking, you know, we're starting to talk about, well, why can't we do a possum strategy together, you know, a possum group between us all? Takamatura have got another group that are doing things. So once you get one thing being resolved, you can actually build on it and do other things.
Yeah. So those sort of coordination role in terms of setting up the template, what needs to be considered as baseline kind of information sourcing? Oh, that's good. I mean, is Jenny saying those, sort of setting up those kind of conversations is something that might be useful going forward?
Yes, very well. Great.
Thanks, me.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Pam. Well, thank you very much Pam. It was very useful submission and questions.
Could I just add? Look, the opportunities that we've had with our local runang through this whole process, through the zone committee, through the other work that we're doing, and through other things now that I'm doing with Takafuniki, with Wairira, you know, there's, there's a whole lot of things that's given us the opportunity to have great, improving relationships with our local runang. It's been a great process that Environment Canterbury initiated, and we need to build on that as well.
Great, thank you. All right. So our next and final submitter for this session is Roger Larkins. So Roger, would you like to start your submission?
Certainly. Thank you very much for giving me the time to present to you. In my submission, I made two points. One was about public transport, which I'd like to address briefly, and I'd like to spend a little bit more time on climate change. Just looking to see whether I can share my screen here. Now, I am a frequent traveller, and as such, I'm a frequent user of the Sydney Public Transport System. I use it extensively because it is timely, it is frequent, and it's reasonably cost-effective. I did some background work on it and found out that there are over pre-Covid, over 600 million sectors used on the Sydney system any given year. That means in a population of 5 million people, there's an average of a million plus people using the system any given day, often taking one or two sectors. Average journey cost is about $3 to $5. Now, the cost recovery on that for operational expenses only is 38%. If you look at cost recovery of infrastructure as well, it's about 27%. The reason for me going through all of that as briefly as possible was to say lowering the cost is not a driver of what would occur in large systems such as Sydney. I can't believe that it would be a driver of the increasing patronage in Christchurch, bearing in mind our population and our system. My concern is that there hasn't been research done into this. And so rather than telling you what to do, I'm just suggesting that rather than going out and spending money by lowering cost, it could well be worth doing some background research first to find out whether it will have the impact you're looking for. Okay. Moving on to climate, which is something I'm rather passionate about, I do have a degree in environmental science. I haven't worked in the sector for a number of years, but I do have hopefully a reasonable understanding of the issues and of the factors involved. I'm very concerned about money being spent that can be of negligible benefit to the global outcomes based on incorrect data. I will start my brief discussion by saying that if nothing I say in terms of presenting facts to you will change your mind, then I would start to question whether you are interested in facts and science or whether climate change is a religion. I don't mean to be rude in saying that, but I know a lot of people that have said to me, nothing that I ever say will change their belief in climate change, which screams to me that they actually don't care about data and facts. A lot of the data I'm taking is from Professor Ole Holm, who is the Emeritus Press Professor of Physical Geography from the University of Oslo in Norway. He publishes a document once every year, and the 2021 publication came out recently. As I refer to the data, I'll talk about three facts, three areas that the data can come from. One is modelling, one is raw data, and one is adjusted data. And almost all the decisions that are being made by councils, by governments around the world are based on modelling. A lot of them are based on adjusted data, and very little is based on raw data. So I've prepared for you three very quick charts. Here is a chart that shows you up to 2017 data from publication I've got quoted there, the range of 90 models of projection of climate change, of temperature change from 2000 looking forward. And you can see two trend lines here. This is the Hadrat Four series, which is recognised as one of the surface-based series that is monitored by the IPCC. The second is the University of Alabama in Huntsville series, which is an atmospheric measure. You'll see that both of them fall into the bottom 97 to 99 percentile of any model. In other words, real-world data is not reflecting the models. And any decisions that are based on this plethora of models are decisions that are destined to come out with results that don't, aren't based on reality. Second source is data that has been adjusted. So GISS is one of the commonly used data series, and this is the list of adjustments on any given year. You'll see that to represent global warming as it has been presented in the media, huge swathes of data have been negatively adjusted by up to 0.2 of a degree, whereas more recent data and some historic data have been adjusted upwards. Now, they will argue that there are scientific reasons for that. Most of the reasons are at best questionable. The third set of data I've got is from Christchurch, from Niwa. And I've been to Niwa's website and I've downloaded the data. And here are the average temperatures for the last 100 years from Christchurch Gardens Weather Station, which has not moved in 100 years, is a great example of a good weather station, and there are a lot of bad ones. And you will see that there is a very small upward trend, both on the maximum, the minimum, and the average, which are the three lines you can see. And the upward trend is uniform, and it has not accelerated, and it is at most about 0.7 of a degree over the last 100 years. I've got some other charts, but I'll move quickly through to this one, which is also relevant to us. It's readily available data from NOAA, the United States Government website, of Littleton sea level data, which again shows you that sea level has been rising for the last 100 years, and again shows you that there is no acceleration, that there is a linear trend. I have other slides prepared, but I'm aware that time is going to be short, so I've given you the basis of my concerns. I think the data, when they are not adjusted, when they're taken as raw data, show that temperatures in Christchurch, sea level in Christchurch, and temperatures globally are not accelerating at anywhere near the levels that have been projected by the models and by the adjusted data, and that any council decisions that you make based on models or adjusted data are going to be a cost to the community with no benefit. I'm open to questions.
Right. Thank you, Roger. I will have a question for you. But first, there are also some other councillors with questions for you there. So I believe that councillor Ian McKenzie has the first question.
Yeah, thanks, thank you, thank you Roger for your presentation. So I take it from that, you don't believe the climate change, now the greenhouse gas emissions savings that are talked about on the various options for public transport are particularly valid?
Look, there are in-stream data coming out of Mornalua, which is the primary source of carbon dioxide monitoring for the last, well, since 1958. Covid presents us with a really good case study of the impact of human greenhouse gas emission compared to natural increase in carbon dioxide. And it showed that at least a third of the ongoing increase is a natural increase and not human, insofar as the gases, the concentration of gas continued to grow at about two-thirds of the rate of previous years in the year that Covid caused lockdowns globally. Carbon dioxide is clearly a greenhouse gas. It is not the most significant. Water vapour is, if you look at the spectra of absorption of, of energy across the water vapour molecule compared to the carbon dioxide molecule, and the prevalence of water vapour in the atmosphere, it is clear that water vapour is the primary driver. And I can provide you with the resource that I've got from Dr Homlam from Oslo, which will provide a lot of detail on that if you'd like.
So giving buses, free buses to under 25-year-olds is unlikely to save a whole lot of greenhouse gas emissions.
I would imagine it would, it would be infinitesimally small.
Thank you.
All right. So a question from councillor Lan Farm.
Good on Roger. Thanks for that submission and really interesting, yeah, data you've got there. My question was just about you saying that there'd be no benefit. I mean, let's just take, for example, if climate change is just sort of all in our heads and it is a religion, let's just say that. Do you accept that there would be other benefits, for example, from getting people to move out of their cars and move on to public transport, say, or buses, sorry, or bikes? Say like better air quality, this kind of bigger issues that society needs to address?
I'm aware that air quality has been a major issue for Environment Canterbury for a number of years. I used to do work with John Smithson some years ago, I'm sure he's retired now, with regard to air quality across the region. The primary driver of air quality at the time appeared to be log burners, which have been remediated. I believe that the World Health Organisation airline, air quality guidelines are now met 98% of the time, plus in Christchurch and in Timru, since those changes have been implemented. Again, I don't know specifically, I don't have data on the benefits for air quality of, of moving to buses. I just know that in the environment that we live in, in Christchurch, which is obviously the primary focus of Environment Canterbury, the infrastructure and the layout do not lend themselves to effective bus use, and forcing people onto buses is unlikely to happen. People will continue to use private cars just by nature of what they do and how they do what they do.
Okay. So Roger, I co-chair the Climate Change Action Committee for Environment Canterbury. So I was quite interested to see your, I'm quite familiar with that data, because I also used to be in the same position as you actually, some 10 years ago. And I've sort of reached the point where I feel that perhaps we should all agree to disagree, what we really do want from you is your feedback on what we are actually proposing to do on the ground, I guess from an environmental viewpoint. So the air pollution is a, is a good example, because, yeah, we could debate this forever. And also perhaps your, your thoughts, I'm particularly interested in your thoughts around the buses, in terms of the evidence of the low fares versus the improved service. Should we actually be putting our money into having more frequent, more reliable buses, rather than making it cheaper for everyone?
Again, it will be research and evidence-based, and I don't have the data available to say that. I can only speak from my personal experience where, as I say, I was commuting to Sydney and travelling every week on the bus system there for a couple of years. I happen to live in the Littleton Harbour Basin, and the bus service here is once each way each day. I would never use the buses here simply because they don't go, well, they go from my area once a day. So cost wouldn't change anything for me. However, I am an outstander in terms of, an outlier in terms of the data, because, yeah, many people have got a much more frequent bus service than I do. The question is, do they go from the right place to the right place? Are there appropriate interchanges? Can people move within about 20% longer than the time taken normally? And if doing so, is it going to be comfortable and convenient? Can they carry things, et cetera? I love the way, the fact that we've got bike racks on the front of buses, it makes life a heck of a lot easier for the people who do want to commute to and from the bus stops. Park and ride services could be an option. I'm not against public transport in any way, shape or form, I just can't see it working in Canterbury is what I'm trying to say. And if it can work in Canterbury, I think the frequency is going to be a driver rather than cost.
All right. Well, thank you very much. If there are no further questions from other councillors, we will conclude this session.
Look, just welcome to the, to the resumption of the annual plan hearings. My name is Claire Mackay, and I'm chairing the session. So we'll now begin with the draft plan hearings, session five. So it's been quite a long day for us. For those councillors and anybody else who's listening, it's page 164 of your agenda, or 165, has actually the submission of, sorry, no, it's 168, has the submission of Scarlett. So Scarlett, everybody has read your submission. They'll be very naughty if they haven't, so no, take that, we'll take that as read. You've got 10 minutes to speak, you can use that however you like. We would possibly like the opportunity to ask you some questions. So, yeah, the floor, well, the screen is yours, so I'll hand over to you.
Okay. So I, I wanted to talk about the flooding first, which is kind of in with the, the long-term climate change, climate change side of things. So I thought that bringing back drainage boards to the communities would help to prevent the flooding before it happens, and with people who know the area really well. And, and then additionally, allowing people to remove some of the gravel from the rivers to prevent the build-up towards flooding. And then in terms of, in terms of payment for the, for the river, for the Ashburn River, getting, using the payments from rates in previous years. And, okay, so that's, that's what I wanted to say about the flooding side of things. In terms of the bus system, I've, I spent five years as a student in Christchurch, and I was, I lived in Christchurch most of my life before that, catching the bus quite a bit, especially when I was at high school. Personally, I think the option two is the most cost-effective in terms of what it would save for the rates rise. And then also, it's, having, having a $2 flat fee is something that even students and low-income earners would be able to afford, and as well as the people who might use the bus every day for, say, coming into town for work. So you, and the way I see it is that you want to balance the cost of people bringing their cars in and parking, and like maybe carpooling and sharing the cost with catching the bus, because ideally you want them to be catching the bus. And if, if the cost turns out cheaper to drive in and park in the city, then people favour that over using public transport, because it's a little bit easier. And the last, so the last time I used the bus, I found that it was, it would have cost me $4 a trip, and if I was going outside of the beach, it would cost me $4 to go out there for the day, and then I wanted to spend money in, in, say, New Brighton, and then I'd have to, it would cost me $4 to come back, and $8 a trip. I mean, I could have driven there and back for half a, and it needs to be accessible for everybody to use. And I think even students would be more, would be happy to pay $2 or $4 a day, $2 a trip or $4 a day. Yeah, because, because they, they would pay that on buying chocolate. It's an accessible cost. And, yeah, I think, I think that's all I had to say on those things. You're on mute.
Thank you. I've got somebody else running around the house, I have to turn it off. Yeah, look, thank you very much for that. Does anybody have any questions of clarification or points for Scarlett that they'd like to? Councillor Farm?
Good on Scarlett, thanks for your submission. Yeah, my question of clarification was just around.
um, you mentioned in your written submission that you were worried, um, that if it was, um, I think, I think you meant if we went for option one with the free fares for some groups, that it might mean a really big, um, fare hike for other groups. Um, but I just wanted to assure you that that wouldn't be the case. Other fares would just remain as they were. Um, and I just wanted to know if that information changed your, um, perception of the options in any way, or whether you still think option two is like a good, um, place for you to land?
Yeah, I think, um, the other, the other thing that how we may make decision was the, the really high increase and I think it was, it must have been the rates, um, that would have come with that decision. And to me, I think it's unfair to pass on that higher percentage rates increase just for one service.
Oh, thank you.
Chair Hury?
Thank you for making the submission, Scarlett. Um, I'm interested in your comment about, um, local boards to control the flooding, like the old catchment boards. Um, so I'm just wondering, um, why you think that would be much better?
Because, um, if you're looking at the, um, like overlooking the whole region in terms of flooding, it, um, seems to me that it'll be easier to miss some kind of flooding risk in a, down a certain street or down a certain area because, um, maybe, maybe the councillors don't live there or whoever's making the decision, they don't live there or anywhere in the area. So they wouldn't necessarily know about the areas being a flood risk, especially if, I don't know, there's a lack of reporting around that area.
Oh, thank you very much. So it's very much about local, local people's knowledge.
Yes.
That's cool. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Chair. Just see. No, I haven't got anybody else. Um, Scarlett, I've got one question. Uh, I, I'm taking it that you are in Christchurch and a bus user currently. Is, am I correct in that?
Um, no, I've currently moved away from Christchurch.
Okay, yeah, no. I was just wondering with the central government's, um, half-price fare, whether you'd noticed any increase in bus usage, but perhaps if you've moved away, that's, that's a little unfair to be asking you that question.
Was, was there a half price?
Uh, central government has come out with a half-price, uh, bus fares, um, in response to the increasing of fuel prices across the nation. So.
Okay, for how long?
Three months from Feast of April. I, I believe I'm correct in saying that it started on the Feast of April. Yeah, I'm getting the thumbs up from a fellow councillor, so that's good. I'm not a user either. But, um, yeah, no, it's, it's, it's an unfair question for you, given that you're not based in Christchurch. Thank you.
Yeah.
If there's no further questions and I don't see anybody else with their hand up, I really appreciate the fact that you've come in early and were prepared to go and give your presentation and have taken the time to, um, present not only your submission in writing, but then take the time to come along and, and present to us. So I really do appreciate that as, as my fellow councillors and the staff that are also listening in. So thank you very much, Scarlett.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will resume session five. We have our next presenter on, which is Heather Davies. So, um, and she's, Heather's kind of been waiting there for a few minutes. So, um, Heather, you've got ten minutes to speak. Um, I'm quite sure that we'll be a little bit lenient if, if we require longer for questions, um, and of clarification and from, um, councillors. But I'll just hand over to you. So if you'd just like to turn your video on and, um, present to us, that would be lovely.
Hello, uh, my name's Heather Davies. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Uh, my submissions, uh, I've restricted it just to the flood, flood, um, flood. The flood protection and river resilience section. Um, I think this section includes information, infrastructure and the money to build and maintain the systems. Um, I think that we need to look at who benefits from flood protection and drainage. Who contributes to those peak flows? What levels of services are appropriate and how long a suitable timeframe is for investment in an infrastructure? Um, and from all that, what's the equitable financing system? Um, a flood protection system, to my mind, needs to be looked at from a full catchment level. Rain falls on a full catch all over the catchment and makes its way down via, via natural processes through gullies, streams, rivers and eventually up to sea. People have been modifying all of those, um, or the speed with which water gets to the river system ever since people have been in New Zealand. Um, the change of vegetation with, with burning, the draining of bogs and swamps, the creating of impermeable surfaces such as roads, buildings, um, concrete. Um, and then artificial drainage, both for, um, the built-up areas and for, um, agricultural land, it all contribute to water getting to the river system faster. Um, so we have, by looking at it on a catchment basis, we're looking at how much water can get in the system rather than looking at, oh, there's a problem down the bottom, we need to try and fix that. Um. The benefits in society aren't just for the people that live alongside, um, a stock bank. They, in New Zealand, we have a very high standard of living, living by world standards. And a lot of that is, can, comes back to our infrastructure, including our flood protection infrastructure. Um, it, it allows us the freedom to move about as we like. It, it allows us to move our products and services around so that, both on a daily basis for ourselves and for export to bring in export income, which then impacts on us, on, on our economy and our standard of living. Um, the, with our, our transportation, our tourists benefit from it as well as our people, our, our local people. Um, it allows us access to emergency and medical services. The, it brings protection for us personally in our homes as well as for our public and private property, um, such as our investments in, in farms and in irrigation schemes and in towns and sewage schemes and all those things. They all get benefits from having a flood protection scheme that's, that contains water up to a level. Um, the contributors to that river flow are all of the land on the catchment, whether it's private land or public land. Um, often the bulk of the water falls at the higher levels because as the rain, the clouds come in, they lift, they get colder and they drop a lot of water at the top. Um, that water via gravity pushes down this, down the hills and then spreads out as it gets to the plains. So if we put in infrastructure and limit it in one place, we have to make sure that that infrastructure carries it all the way to the sea. Or we're just moving the problem from one place to another. Um, with, when it comes to bridges and power lines, there's very heavy, um, public investment in that. And when it comes to cities and industrial areas, there's a lot of private investment. On, on agricultural land, there's a lot of investment in resource consents and fertility and, um, irrigation infrastructure, the, um, pastures. There's a lot, a whole lot of investments everywhere and they all get impacted by that water coming down faster. Um, so one of the things we have to do is look at the appropriate level of services and the timeframes that that's for. Um, to do that, we need high-quality information. Um, and that's both at a council level and at a private individual level. So people can understand what to expect as far as security on a particular property, on their home, on, um, on what they want to invest in there and how, or how they'll feel happy. Um, council has collected river flows, rainfall data, flood protection system performance. Um, it has asset management plans and all this data has been avail, is available within council. But for members of community, it's, it's difficult to get hold of. Um, we, most of our flood protection infrastructures started seventy years ago. So it's, it's whilst being maintained, it is aging. Um, the technologies have improved in some cases and our, um, our knowledge of how they, of how the rivers respond has changed. Um, we, going forward, council's got some plans in place to review six schemes. And in my submission, I have really strongly supported that. I would particularly like the Salwen River, um, to be reviewed and looked at as a full catchment rather than just as the bottom end of a catchment. Um, I think that there's benefits for ev- everybody in society, um, from looking at it as catchment level, but there's also opportunities to integrate a lot of other values community has. Um, I think that we need to look at having a more equitable way of financing our, our infrastructure systems. At the moment, a lot of it's done by targeted rates on adjacent landowners. And it's not necessarily relative to the services they're getting, just the perceived risks they have. Um, it, whilst there is some general rates and, um, there's not a long-term, um, plan, I guess, for, for, for people, everybody to be contributing to those, those systems at the moment. Um, I want to support you with getting high-quality information out to people, making it easily accessible. Um, getting those reviews done and, um, and ensuring that as central government is assisting or continuing to ask central government to assist with this because they are one of the, they are responsible for a lot of the land and a lot of the infrastructure that the taxpayers have been involved in. Um, thank you. I'm not sure if that made quite sense.
Thank you very much, Heather. Um, you had, you had a lot of information attached to your, uh, submission, which councillors have available as well. So that was, um, really valuable that you put that detail there. We have a, we have some hands up. Um, Councillor McKenzie?
Uh, thanks, Chair Jenny, uh, Chair Claire. Uh, thank you, Heather, for an excellent submission. Um, and, and just for clarification purposes, you live on the lower Salwen. So, um, is, is your submission, uh, is focused on review, uh, on encouraging the review of the Salwen River. I think you, you made that point very clearly in the submission.
That's correct, yes.
Thanks, Heather.
Um, councillors, Uncle?
Thank you very much. Thanks for your submission, Heather. Um, Ian's really asked my question. So I just, uh, thank you for a really full and, and complete submission on, on, on the rivers and our catchments.
Thank you.
And we've got Chair Hury, she's got her hand up.
Hi, yes, uh, Heather, I want to say congratulations on such a thorough and, um, you've demonstrated a very good understanding of the situation here in Canterbury and it poses a number of problems. I'm just interested to know about your perspective on the Soil Conservation and Rivers Control Act in nineteen forty-one and, and the fact that that concentrated on soil conservation. Have you got any views about how we're doing soil conservation now?
I think the soil conservation has improved a lot. Um, there's still some, there are still issues, but I guess a river system by nature will always have some erosion within it. Um, the coming, particularly the ones that come from the mountains, but any steep land, whether it's hills or mountains, well, there's always going to be erosion when there's heavy rainfall and it saturates the soil. Um, and, and the speed of the water moves fast. I, I think that the, the braided rivers add, and particularly the braided part of the rivers add more complexity as well because we have to achieve flood protection schemes from a human perspective without destroying the braided sections for a biodiversity perspective. Um, and if, if we just said, okay, we're not going to have flood protection schemes anymore because we want braided rivers everywhere, our whole way of life within New Zealand would completely change. And to my perspective, I think that we have to find a balance somewhere in the middle. Um, I think that particularly on the Salwen, the soil conservation, there's still quite a bit of, I guess, during flood events, there's still a lot of soil comes down the river. Um, and a lot of gravel comes down the river. But I'm, I think all we can do is keep trying to get vegetation to hold things. We can't actually stop the natural process of plantification.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Heather, you've obviously got a really good understanding and handle on, and interest in the subject. Is, do any other councillors have any questions they have for Heather as presenter? If there are not, and I don't see anybody with their hands up here, though, I would just, um, really say thank you on behalf of everybody um, for taking that time to not only put in a submission and write your attachment, which was, I found very, um, informative, but also taking the time to come on so late in the afternoon, actually. But, so look, we, you really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
No problem. Thank you for being part of the consultation.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I'm not aware, portrayal that we've heard anything from Rimpi, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that being the case, I think, um, we'll call today's, um, the day one of the annual plan hearings to a close. Um, the next meeting, of course, is tomorrow at nine o'clock. So we'll see you all back bright-eyed and bushy-tailed tomorrow morning at nine. And I will now pass over to, to Mataya Cranwell, who is going to close today's events out with the Karakia. So, Yayan.
Uh, ten ake, Claire, na itu mehiatu ki ake, na i fakahari tenai wahako tenai ra, nori ra ten ake. Na mehiano hoki ki ake, um, etu tumaki e chair hui. Um, ki o koutou hoki, Ian, Vicky, Elizabeth. Amo koutou kaha i tenai ra, i fakahari tenai mahi uaua, kirunga te roriko tenai wa. Just acknowledging the awesome, uh, cheering today, um, how difficult it's been, just being online, um, and the start and stop proceedings for the day, but just acknowledging everyone's professionalism and, um, and job well done. So, um, commend everyone's, um, effort today, nori ra ten a koutou, ten a koutou, na ten a tatakatoa. Hei, um, kataaka ne te karakia i tenai, na tenai po. Norera tenakutu, tenakutu, atena tatataua, hai kataaka ni te karakia i tenei, i tenei po. Ka fakiri'a, takoriro, ki te tahuhu o totatau wari. Ki atikina'ano, atonawa, atonawahi, haumie, huiye, tai, kiye. Ta'tauta, hai apopo, see you tomorrow.
Thank you everybody. Bye.
See you tomorrow.
Thank you.